Thank you for coming. Mr. Banks will lead us on the integration.
Father, once again, we come before you to give you thanks to the president to lift your name up, God. We continue to act as Jesus. Bless our community, bless our law of commission and in their family. We act always in your son, Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. One nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just.
Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight to our workshop. We're going to be discussing our park signs and associated fines, vacancy in the parks, and traffic calming issues. I'm gonna make a couple of announcements before we get started. Trumpet Tree is going to be hosted by the sheriff's office this Sunday from five o'clock until seven o'clock. It's going to be in the vacant lot right here on the corner of Central and Summit. And it's gonna be a drive-through. So we're asking, hoping that everybody will come out. And the time doesn't change until next Sunday, I believe. So it still should be daylight till at least about seven fifteen, seven thirty. Also, for fun, there's a group that's going to probably be on their bicycles or foot or golf cart if you want to. And it's gonna be the boot crew. We're gonna start a new tradition, dress up, come out. At about two o'clock, we're going to meet over at Miller Mill. And just go and tour the town and kick off our trumpet tree. So what fun, so please, everybody, yeah, isn't that fun?
I seen about forty the other day.
Did you?
Ran through town on golf cart.
They were on their golf cart thing, yeah. Well, Willaka has a strong golf cart population, but we're gonna do it on our bicycles or you can do it on foot. You can also do it on a golf cart if you want to, and let's just go out and have fun. Just enjoy the day. With that, let's go ahead and get started. We're going to move our public comments, if it's okay with those that are here in attendance. We're gonna move those to after we've had some discussions so that we can also get your input. This is a workshop, we wanna make sure we get your input, but you probably don't wanna give us your input until you've heard our discussions. That sound good?
Makes sense.
Okay, everybody in agreement? Okay, with that, let's go ahead and get started on park sign. Do you wanna lead us off?
Certainly, Mr., this has been a long-running issue quite a while back. It came up and you decided to workshop it. And so now we're up today to look at the content of our signs. And I think it came about, there were some violations in the parks and what was the, the fines were ten dollars, very minimal. The ordinance says level four. I do have a slide of that, the current fine schedule. The ordinance says any violation of park is a class four fine, which is thirty-five dollars with a twenty-two dollar admin fee, fifty-seven dollars. And then you had some discussion about, oh, should we raise that so it has more teeth? Or should some of them be criminal offenses? And what I meant, put in your, in the discussion, the packet was you could just raise all these fines on the schedule. And another option would be just to amend the ordinance to make it a class one or two offense, which would increase the, the fee to a hundred and thirty-two or a hundred and fifty-seven dollars for the fine. So you can either change the whole schedule of fines or just change which class of fine we levy for violating the ordinance, the parks ordinance. And then we have, the other issue is you want to talk about the content of the signs. We do have a sign, these examples that are in your packet were based on the existing sign with a few additions that have been discussed. For instance, Eba Lions Park, Fletcher Park. One thing was at the bottom to put not only citing the ordinance, but the potential fine. And then who to call for non-emergencies and obviously emergency would be nine-one-one as well as if you notice maintenance issues in the park, what number you could call. And I think we also added, I think it's already on the signs. Then the one for the beach, you wanted to add no boat or jet skis at the beach. No skateboarding in the gazebos. There were some other issues that any park that had a gazebo would have that added. And then also, the quote, I guess people are eating on the tennis court and leaving all their trash out there and so forth. So is it, there's an example of a sign that might notify people that courts are for racket sports only, don't sit on the net, don't eat and drink out there and so forth. So this is for your discussion tonight. Previously, you've been given a photograph of the sign, an opportunity to comment. So I just wanna give you something to start with and we can scratch through it or add things as you, as you desire.
Okay. So I wanna start with, I wanna start down here in, Commissioner Burton. Do you have any comments or any questions at this time?
Well, yeah, I'm just looking at this and of course, you know, we wanna say.
Can Commissioner Burton, can you take your microphone down?
No, I'm just kinda looking at this and I just wanted to say that, you know, we have this fine schedule. But I think, you know, how do we kinda define it? I would take some of these.
Just my ringtone's on death. I apologize.
Hold on.
They're going down, you know?
You're allowed once.
But on some of this, would it be easier just to say, you know, if your angles are not on leash, the fine is X number of hours where they can actually see it? You know, where they can actually see what penalty might be? Or like on the, it says, I don't know, let me see here, tampering in park, no wearing, like vehicles. You know, if you're parked illegally, what the fine actually would be? So like no parking in this area or whatever, and the fine is this. So that people understand that the sheriff pulls in, gives you a ticket, this is what you're gonna get, seventy-five dollars, whatever, I'd use seventy-five dollars. But I know Commissioner DeVito wants to be at least a thousand if you're in treatment. I'm just kidding. But I know how you don't like cars, you know, rambling through our parks, like. Yeah, I don't agree, so I am, I'm kidding. But, but yeah, it would be, I don't know if it's necessary, but.
Like at the bottom, I put example at the bottom, violers will be fined up to a hundred dollars. Now, depending on what you said in that, that was just an example for handle trespass.
So you're saying all of this, anything that you do on this page, it would be a hundred and fifty dollars?
Certainly, the ordinance reads that way, but it's actually, the ordinance is fifty-seven dollars total.
What if we changed it to class one, you said?
You could, then it would be a hundred and fifty-seven dollars for the admin fee.
But see, then you, you have everything, it just says up to a hundred and fifty dollars.
We can change it to say you will be fined a hundred and fifty-seven dollars.
For occurrence.
For occurrence. Yeah.
All right, that's interesting. I guess I'm just misunderstanding.
So what you're asking, Commissioner Burton, and what you're stating is that you think that each one of these should have the fine next to it? It should be next to each of each?
It's like when I come into a handicap year, I don't have to pay you a hundred and fifty bucks if they catch me and I'm not handicapped.
There's that little one.
It's right there, it said a hundred and two hundred and fifty dollars. And boy, let me tell you, you got it. So that's what I was saying, it's right there in front of you.
We can make it larger. You see at the bottom, it's pretty small, but.
Yeah, I didn't notice it very clearly.
Yeah, like at the bottom of the example.
Yeah, I think it says at the bottom, let me include that, then hey, I didn't know, well, it's right there.
Yeah.
And you didn't find the sign.
It's kinda, it's kinda like.
The fine print.
Yeah, nobody likes the fine print.
I like the sign print.
You know, nobody likes, oh geez, you caught me, I have a fine print.
Yeah.
That's often changed.
Okay.
That's.
Commissioner DeVito, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, to that, I agree that as you go down on the sign, there's more fine print. And I was, I think that for some of this information, some of it probably should go on a separate sign. And I was noticing in Willaka, at their ballpark or whatever, they have a couple of different signs. But I think Commissioner Burton has a good point. And some of the existing posts we have are pretty tall. You could actually put the sign with the rules and then you could put another sign under it with more about the penalties. And, you know, that might get people's attention more. And as well, I noticed there's three signs here. There's not a specific sign for the dog park. And the issues that people have raised about dog park are a little bit different. Like it needs to say no aggressive dogs. And to me, at the dog park, well, for one thing, I don't, I don't notice the sign there that actually says that city of Crest City. So some people seem, they don't know who it belongs to. But I really think that part at the bottom that says who to call if there's a problem at the dog park, that to me should be bigger. And again, not so much in the fine print because when you have an issue at the dog park, sometimes you really have an issue. But I, I think Commissioner Burton's point as well, take that, that maybe we could divide the information up and have a couple of signs depending on which park. If it is. But they would, they would fit, you know, a sign with the rules and then below it, I think one of the penalties.
I believe sometimes on unemployed, your disabled parking sign, it'll have the sign and then there'll be a separate little sign underneath it that says two hundred and fifty dollars.
That's correct, that's true.
So there is a, a separate sign. Keith, can you speak to that? I mean, is that, do we have that capability, I mean, from a?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay.
And Mayor, if I could just say.
Okay, to that.
I think the main thing is we want to make sure that people really can see this stuff, that people are on, on notice, that they know. So.
Yeah, I think we're all in agreement with that. Commissioner Burton, do you have anything more right now at this time?
No, just saying.
Okay, Commissioner Banks?
Cause you know, I point to the sign about no dog, and I just like saying, go ahead on. I pointed at a couple of little big old dogs, yeah, and all that little licks swimming with. I'm pointing at the sign, I really thought I would leave the nation. But we put a price. I'm with that, we need to put a price. And you know, we need to put teeth in it. That, that, I think that would be the reason we are here. Cause I, I think the average person know that dogs shouldn't be in the park and ridden and related with the rest of the people swimming. But they are due, now bear in mind, bear in mind, soon we put it up there about the boats. Cause some of the people may have the dogs in the boat, they come across there with the dog in the boat, and the dog get out of the boat with them. I haven't seen that happen.
What happened because I haven't seen it?
You don't see that?
Well, you know, you, you know, I have a dog, my dog goes everywhere. And I do not think it's swimming, but, but that's neither here nor there. You know, dogs become a different kind of issue. Dog should be on, on a leash. A dog that comes off of a boat, because I do have a boat, he's with me on my boat. When we're get off the boat, he is on leash. I mean, even if I have to touch through water to get him to shore, he is still on a leash. And so there's some, I, I think you can work with it, but, but they can't be on the beach. You know, they can't stay on the beach. We have enough room at the park where they, they can be away from the people. And it's just something that I think we're gonna have to work with. I mean, I know there's a lot of people that don't like dogs. The last meeting, a lot of people said, well, we don't want any dogs in any of our parks. Well, that's not gonna happen. We don't want any unleashed dogs in the park, for sure. And we want to go after those people that have dogs, that when their dogs take a dump, for lack of a better expression, I'm sorry. They should be cleaning that up, they should be cleaning up after their dogs and disposing of it properly. And that, those are the people that need to be ticketed if they're not, or fined or however we wanna do that. I mean, I was reading through the whole animal, animal thing, I was just amazed at how old some of the citizens in our ordinances, but what would get their old year.
Commissioner West, do you have any comments?
I want us to add that no airplanes loaded on the beach.
Yes.
No airplanes on the beach?
Right, yeah, I almost forgot about that.
We didn't have airplanes that fly in.
Yeah, parks over there.
That fly in, and if nobody's on the beach, they park up there, picnic.
That's something that needs to be posted out on the beach.
Yes.
So we need to have a sign somewhere out on the beach. Keith, you must, is that?
It's doable.
It's doable, okay, so that when they do fly in there, because they're not gonna be coming from the parking lot, they're gonna be coming from the water.
Through the gate, there's always that sign as they come through the fence, but they'll be coming in the effort.
Same with the boats.
The boat should be parked outside of.
Yeah.
Where we, what we're continuing to beach area, which we have not really designated in the water yet. I thought that we were supposed to be getting a floating rope or whatever to designate a swim area. And no dogs, no boats, no planes, only swimmers should be.
Should be in that area.
Should be in that area. I mean, you know, living in St. Pete, we never were allowed on the beach with our boat. We always had, we, you know, unless it was a private island out in the middle of nowhere. But on the public beaches, we could put our anchors in and walk in, okay, from our boats. You couldn't, you weren't allowed to bring the boat into where people swim and fish. A lot of people would fish along the shoreline, so, you know, that's what I was always used to.
But you know, I was down there, where I go there, walking morning. I'm down at a, to me, looked like we're floating dock, well, look like it's damaged, is it damaged?
Yes, sir, it needs to come out.
Yeah, something wrong with it, cause I was thinking, boaters could park there and, and let that, they wouldn't be in the swimming area. If somebody come across there, the boat, over, over on that particular side.
You know, we also don't have a dock where you put your boat in. It's really not that far away from walking over to the beach to park your boat at the dock there, okay, and walk over to the beach. But I, I don't know, I, I don't like the idea of pulling up on land.
No.
It shouldn't be on land, but I'm talking about over there with that boat dock, they could tie down over there, in that area. And there wouldn't be, on the land side, that people are swimming, I don't think.
Keith, do we have, do we have an issue with, I mean, as far as the boats coming up on the shore?
No, ma'am, not that I know of, but we had talked about putting, uh, floating buoys.
For a swim area.
And Phil was here, he was working on that.
Yeah.
With, uh, Captain Woods or somebody. And they were gonna hook us up with the floating stuff, and we're gonna rope off an area. And put no boats allowed, no jet skis, and then on each side, you can park boats.
You can park on each side.
Right. And that's, that's what was originally talked about when Phil was here.
Okay, okay, thank you. Commissioner DeVito?
Right, well, where the little floating dock is, that's supposed to be the kayak launch area. And as well, that gets in, I wouldn't wanna be parking boats in the kayak launch area, and then to the left of the kayak launch area, it's actually. Meant to be conservation areas between the sidewalk and the water, it's got native vegetation and.
Has it been designated as, as conservation area, Keith?
Just to the north of the floating dock is where the kayaks and stuff and canoes are supposed to put in, everything to the south of it. Is cattails, we're not messing with that, but where the dock is and our fence is, is actually the designated area where they're supposed to put their kayaks in.
Okay.
Um, I know we got prices. About a year or so ago, on tearing the floating dock out and putting in a permanent wooden dock.
But Mayor, what, what was the price, do you remember?
Uh, well, back then, it was around probably nineteen thousand, I'd have to give my paperwork.
Yeah, I'm not gonna respond back with that really.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, but it's gonna be a bigger dock, it's gonna go out, maybe a little further, but it's gonna be wider. And be, you know, for the people to go fish off of.
Locks are expensive. Commissioner DeVito, did you have something you were wanting to say?
Right, you don't, I think in the land use maps, that area is designated as conservation. Oh, I'm sorry. Um, so it's been, I think in the land use map, that's designated as conservation area. That's a, that's a very wide beach there, so there should be plenty of rent. I think we spent ten thousand dollars to put that sand in.
Okay. Commissioner West, do you have anything more at this point?
I'm saying.
Okay, Commissioner DeVito?
Um, yeah.
Comments?
Um, I do, um, when Charles started off, um, he wasn't here when we started the discussion. And there was one thing he said, um, well, I'm not sure it's, I'm not sure it's exactly what we talked about. We, um, it was Commissioner Banks that talked about putting teeth behind our rules and ordinances. I don't think we really have ever enforced particularly our ordinances, except for people being there after dark. We never even discussed the fact that we have fines. Um, and you have identified those for us. Um, to me, the issue is not that the fines aren't high enough. But that right now, we don't really have a mechanism to enforce the fines we have. And, um, so I think we need to spend some time figuring out. Who is gonna give these tickets, or who's authorized to do that. Um, and as well, Commissioner Banks was one that brought up the idea of trespassing, repeat violators. And I've looked at the ordinance, Debbie, can you not hear me?
We can't hear you, you're understanding, not understanding you through the mask.
Well, I speak at Roderick, and without any mic, can everybody get to me there, so, um. Charles, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so anyway, I don't see, I mean, I think trespass is a good idea, to have repeat violators. I don't see anything in the ordinance that talks about us being able to trespass people, and, um. So I thought that was a good idea, um, and as well, it's just completely unclear to me, um. How these signs and hopefully trespass get enforced, and then the other thing is. Um, most of what is on the signs, in terms of the rules, um, are already in our ordinance. But I think some of what is on the sign that we're talking about is not in the ordinance. And it seems to me that we can't really put it on the sign if it's not in the ordinance.
Well, we would have to amend the ordinance.
Okay.
Specifically increase the fines and so forth as well.
Okay, cause I, when, when you put the ordinance in here, um, I identified places where. We would want to add something to the ordinance, but I don't, I didn't know if we were gonna talk about that tonight, but I wrote it down like before. So my big question, how do we make these plans work?
Well, my understanding from talking to Captain Housary is, um, the Sheriff's Office will not enforce these, um, our fine schedule. They'll do criminal, and they, they can trespass individuals, but they won't fine someone a hundred fifty dollars for having a dog. You know, go to the bathroom in the park, not pick it up, so, um, our code enforcement can enforce those fines, it's the only person. Staff that would do that, but, uh, again, she would need to observe them, you know, violating them, cite them, and fine them.
But, but that's a huge problem, because most, what happens is gonna be after five o'clock on the weekends, or on Thursday or Friday. I just don't, I mean, if we only have one person to enforce things all over the city three days a week. I don't see how this is gonna work.
It was my understanding from the Sheriff's Department, we do need some clarity for this, clar- clarification, is that they would, they would enforce our ordinances.
If it's a criminal offense, if it's a criminal offense.
They never said if it was a criminal offense, but they could give tickets, I don't see why they couldn't give tickets.
It was specifically explained when we asked the police department, uh. Wells said right there at the podium, that they would enforce all of this, ordinances, co- all of it, code, yeah, that, so.
That was, that was my understanding as well, so we'll get some, we need to get some clarification from them, but, I mean, that's a ticket, it, it's a ticket. And so we figure out with them, you know, with the Sheriff's Department, they're gonna write a ticket, if they see this happening, they're gonna write a ticket, there's money involved. And so, um, that should, that should clear that up now.
I'll get that cleared up.
Yeah.
But, and then.
Talk to the Colonel.
Um, Mayor, what about the trespass, specifically the trespass? But, but do we? In other words, um, is that part of the enforcement scheme? I guess this is a question maybe for Robert Pickens. Do we have to say in here somewhere that people can be trespassed if they've received one or two, um. Violations?
I, I don't know if it would, if it would necessarily be. To make it legal to trespass on it in the ordinance, I think that it would make it better if people are to put on notice, that if they have violation, that they would be trespassing. I think it would be totally fine if somebody's breaking a rule in one of our parks, and the Sheriff's Office trespassed them, I think that would be fine.
But how do they know when to do that?
If they're breaking one of the ordinances.
What are you trying to get at, Commissioner DeVito? I mean, because if you see them, if they see them doing something in the park that they're not supposed to be doing in the park.
Well, usually you don't trespass someone for, I mean, we have a schedule of fines. Usually you don't trespass someone and prohibit them from coming back to a park unless there's some kind of repeat violation. I mean, to say, you know, you let your dog in the park, I mean.
So then we have to establish, so then that has to be established, so that's what you need to say, is that that's.
That's what I'm trying to say.
That we need to establish, at what point do we consider them trespassing, and put a trust, trust.
We could have the sign, uh, find up to a hundred fifty dollars, and repeat offenders will be trespassed. And then we have to probably put it in the ordinance, or part of our amendment to the ordinance would stipulate that.
Cause I don't think we can just leave it up to the discretion of the sheriff, and I don't think we wanna trespass people for one, one timers.
It depends, I mean, it depends on, it depends on what they're doing in our park, I mean, cause they. You know.
If they're being belligerent. Trespass.
He can trespass, he can trespass on first, first offense. You know, if they're tearing our bathrooms up, then they can trespass them, I would think, at a first offense, so we need to establish. What they can trespass them, you know.
And I think we need some clarification about, uh, where the line is drawn between a civil offense and a criminal offense. Because I think that things like destruction of property, like bathrooms. Becomes a criminal, that's vandalism. Um, so that's pretty clear, um, it's these. Smaller things.
Where?
Are the problem.
Well, catching. You know, we said all these bylaws and rules and all kind of rule, but you gotta act in the case somebody, you know, I, I, I knew I was close about that. We always, always been having a problem. We, we tried putting the sign down on the ground, and next morning, they go somewhere in the lake. So, I remember y'all see that up on the oak tree? I think Keith, it hit me. And to put, put, put that one up there.
They put their own signs up, sometimes, sometimes they have their own signs they put up.
And then the people trying to keep that, on Bay Street, straight now. We put signs up, signs up, come out there the next morning, the sign gone, they in the edge of the lake, in the bushes. It, it just, it just been a hassle. It, it, it really have, it been a hassle, so I, I don't know what kind of rule that we can set. And I, I know we can set a fine, to put teeth, so if we catch, if we just happen to look up. And I reiterate that word again, look up, and catch somebody, we can pop a fine on them, a decent bounty, and the word of mouth will get out. They ain't playing no more.
Yeah. Keith, with those signs that you do find, I mean, that's something too, I'm sure there's gonna be fingerprints and things on those signs, but we could turn that over to the. Sheriff's Department, I don't know what they could do with it, but, you know.
They wanna spend the time.
If they wanna spend the time, but.
Not with, not with a pickup backing into.
Yeah.
We, we, we'd have had that out there.
Well, that's.
It, it just, I, I just don't know what, what, what to call it, I don't know what words for it.
Well, some people black those signs.
Yeah.
Let's face it, you know, you go in the teeth bed, and there's that sign that.
And when you come to, uh, the bathroom, now that gonna be a hard, cause they have a problem in the school system.
With the TikTok.
Yeah, oh, yeah, they have, in our school system, uh.
TikTok challenge, TikTok challenge.
With destroying the bathroom.
I think they're taking care of it in our schools, though, they're putting them, basically pulling them out of school, and they're putting them into a, a. Almost like school jail type situation when they're, when they're caught. But cameras, and I know Willaca, you know, they, they're using, um, some of their jag money right now. Some jag money, they're putting cameras up in all of their parks over in Willaca. Um, they're having some, all of, everybody, I mean, and meeting with the mayors, they're all saying that they're having issues in their parks with vandalism.
Well, that city tried that.
So, it's not just, it's not just Crescent City.
I don't know whether we ever got in the work or not, but we put one.
There's one over in, in Harrah Banks Park.
Yeah, and we put one around there, uh.
Like Stella.
Like Stella, next to beach, and the lady said.
I know, so some people concerned about that, because they feel like it's Big Brother, Big Brother's watching over, or, you know.
Yes, and I don't see how they can return to the lady's house, but I, I didn't give up, I didn't go into it, they made him move with them. I, I didn't feel that.
Sometimes it can be, uh, you know, it can possibly deter people from, if they, if they think, if you put it up high enough.
Yeah, right.
If you put it up high enough, that they think that, you know, they are being caught on camera.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, how does the commission feel about just, right now it's a class four fine, anything on that list? In the ordinance, even if we add more to the ordinance, do you wanna go with a class two fine, or a class one? As a way to, to add those teeth?
I think you.
Right now it's thirty five dollars plus a twenty two dollar administrative cost. Go, do three, two, or one, to actually increase the fine. It would be for everything across, and then we put that total onto the sign, but find, rather than up to, say violators will be fined. You know, a hundred thirty two dollars or a hundred fifty seven dollars. And multiple violators will be trespassed.
Thank you, Misses.
Well, to me, that's, to me, it's not the amount of fine, it's that we actually figure out a way to patrol this area and write a ticket. That, I, I think whatever it is, if I need people, um, until, I mean, until we actually try it out. This is not a wealthy area, um, so I, to me, almost any fine would be sufficient, if we can just impose it.
But you know, I, I think going to people's parking book will kind of open their eyes.
Yeah.
A liar come on in their head.
Thanks to somebody out there writing a ticket.
Right, yeah, so, but, to, to me, I think it should be class one.
Well, we're just today, you know, of course, today's a workshop, so we're just talking about this today, but let me ask you, let me ask you this. Um, Charles, Bobby, are, are we kind of putting part for the force right now in the fact that we are not. Actually going through our ordinances, because our ordinance certainly need to be cleaned up in the parks. Um, is there some way, at this point in time, could we go ahead and change that portion? That, um, you know, as far as the penalty, could we change that?
Yes, do you change the classes, don't we?
Just change the class penalty at this time, because I really feel like some of these, you know, when you look at some of this. We, we really need to look at, um. We need to look at our ordinances, cause our ordinances haven't been up, updated since, what, oh, seven?
Oh, seven.
For our parks.
It's like it was suspensive.
Yeah, so a lot, you know, a lot has changed since then, um.
Mayor, I, I can mention the ordinances, I, I think they cover almost everything we've talked about, I think it's a good ordinance. Um, I made specific note of things that we've identified recently as problems. That are not in there, but I actually, um, I made a list of all the things that we've talked about with parks, and I looked through the ordinances, and. It seems pretty comprehensive, but it doesn't include, um. It doesn't include the boats at the swim beach, one thing I was concerned about is, um. Our ordinance says that dogs have to be on leashes, but it does, I don't see in the ordinance that it says the dogs can't be in the swim beach area. Which, you know, that's to prevent the, uh, contamination in large park.
Okay, there was a sign there at the beach that said no dogs.
Well, I, I know, that's what I'm saying about.
All swimming there, you know.
That's what I'm saying about the ordinance, we have it on the sign, but it's not in the ordinance. Um, I made a little list, and then I have some questions, um. About the permit, the park permit part of the ordinance, but, I mean, I don't know, Mayor, I looked at the ordinance, it looks good to me, but there are some things. That are missing, like boats, dogs, and airplanes at the swim beach.
We can bring back those proposed additions, as well as changing the classification, that the level of the fine. To adopt as revision to the ordinance. I think it is pretty comprehensive ordinance.
I thought it was excellent.
Fishing, and there's one part of it, when you go to fishing, fishing prohibited in boat ramps. It should be unlawful for any person in a park to fish in areas designated for boat ramps, well. Do we, I mean, there's just some things in here, we have, that's gonna upset a lot of people, because we have a lot of people, especially down.
Oh, good, you're right.
And down here, and they, and they fish right there at the boat ramps.
You can fish off that dock, it's just, I think the ramp itself.
I think, well, I just think that if you're, if that's the case, you know, when you say the boat ramp, that's the boat ramp, so.
That's understood.
Uh, 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 let me tell you, I was on the comic, you know. That came before, and, and Commissioner West can, uh, can witness on, on this. Somehow they put that in the paper one time before, and I ain't never seen that many people, there's the police, there's somebody unguessed. In this house, at one time. All the old ladies, we call that, that's where they have their fun.
That's where they have their fun, they, they, they sit down there.
You let me say, oh, no.
We don't wanna mess with that.
They didn't mis scrutinize the word. I think Keith might remember that, all of them come in here, they were finna get us.
So it says an area is designated for boat ramps, I'm just saying, if somebody wanted to be picky, they could be picky and say it's, it's in there, and if they pass this way. You know, I'm just.
It's also, uh.
It's also, um. The time where the same fishermen go down there night after night, it's a group of people, they are well-baited, with no problems. But it's, uh, conversation and whatever. You ever wanna know what's going on, just go down there and sit. They're very friendly. I've done it a lot when my son was little, we went down and.
Oh, yeah.
Talk with them.
Oh, I go down and talk to them.
Um, so how do we make it so that it's not no fishing for, but did in, but in about ramps? But not on the. They can fish, but not in the, actually.
What number is that?
That is three fishing.
A full page, Jean.
It isn't numbered. Article one. Yes.
No, you're, you're within the ordinance, there's the chapter, this is the chapter the ordinance was folded into, right?
It's five, five, three, number three, yeah, the next page.
What page?
It, it's not numbered.
Okay, I'm not getting this, the, the ordinance is in, the ordinance that was adopted, that was in here, but don't we need to be addressing chapter five of the code, because the ordinance was folded into it?
Well, I was just, I, I was just going through and, and reading it, and just making an example of, you know, we just need to make sure that.
It's done this. Well, the boat, the boat ramp.
It's got some cleaning up.
It's where you're putting the boat in.
Launch, yeah.
Where you got the boat launch. And that would, that would actually clear that up.
So that's what I'm just saying, is some of this, it just needs, it just needs some cleaning up, city councils in here, and it should be city commissions. Um. You know, and there's also. When you, when you come into here, dogs and other pets on beach, this is, if you read this. Unless the dog is held on a leash by a competent person that is no more than eight feet in length. So is the person eight feet length? I mean, so when you, you know, when you read that, and it should not be on a retractable leash. You know, that's an issue too, especially with a big dog on a retractable leash. I know a lot of places, um. They have that, that's a, they, they state that specific on a retractable leash, but, you know, that needs to be.
Need some calls.
Just needs some, yeah, just need to be, just need some, some work smithing and some cleaning up.
Mayor, I need some clarification, because there's two documents in here. One is the, is an ordinance, ordinance oh seven two one.
And that's the one I'm going to write out at this point in time.
But which, okay, but wasn't that folded into chapter five, is what I'm asking? So which would we, it's my understanding that we go by the code, not the ordinance?
I think chapter five is based on the ordinance.
It's based on the ordinance.
But, but what I'm asking is, when we're going to amend something, do we amend the ordinance, or do we amend chapter five of the code?
Wouldn't we amend the code by ordinance?
I think so, yes.
Right, so what I'm saying is, if you're going to clean something up, it would not be the ordinance that's already been folded into the code. We should be looking, as far as I can tell, at actually chapter five, because I think some of those things that were identified, like I did the same thing you did, like I saw a council and not commission. But if you look at the code that the ordinance was folded into, that was taken care of. Yeah. So that's what I'm saying, I think we need to look at the part without the underlying. The actual chapter five.
Did you ever hang up? Can I ask you a little section of reason here? Um, where people can't move into the areas and sleep and, and, and.
That's, we haven't gotten to that yet.
We haven't gotten to that yet.
We haven't got. I think this is part of it, you know, it kind of started the whole plan here.
Yeah, I think we do that at once, we amend the ordinance seven point seven dash two one and chapter five of this.
At the same.
We, we amend them simultaneously.
Like we've got the chief of police, so that needs to be in the sheriff's, you know, the sheriff's office. I mean, there's just some work smithing in here that needs to be cleaned up. And when you go to the signs, um. All animals must always be, must be always on a leash. All animals must be leached at all times, so something to make it. Pet waste prohibited in parks and rights away. Well, pet, you can't, you sometimes choose where your pet's going to. Go to the, yeah, but you need to clean it up if they do, so. Pet waste prohibited in parks and rights, in rights play.
We could bring this back in December. If there's not enough time.
For November, yeah.
Have that all recommended changes.
And clarification, like a permit, it would be a city permit, just so they know. Some people are, you know, is it county, is it city, you know, who they get the permit from, so it would be a city permit, but in the, our city permits required. That would be my recommendation.
I'm just saying, that is all pets.
All pets.
All.
All animals, all animals.
That's just up for the cockatoos on the shoulders.
Must be on a leash on, a lot of times they're, I think sometimes on their ankles, they're, they're little.
Yeah.
But.
Mayor, you wanna open up the public comments?
I actually have one more issue, if I can find that.
Please do, and then I'm gonna open up, I'm gonna open up that for public comment.
Okay, um, well, Mayor, I have one more, I don't have got the parks, that's on the permits, um. Okay, somewhere in here, I'll see if I wrote down the page. There's a section about, um, requiring permits and for park use. Uh, here it is, park permits, yeah, five seven, okay.
All right, what, no.
Five seven.
Okay. So I've looked at that, and, um, it's pretty general, and some of the things that we actually do aren't in there, and I think some of the things that we need aren't in there. Um, there's nothing specific in the park permit about the need for, um, a traffic and safety plan for groups that were a certain size. Where our houses, we experienced this quite a bit. And when Chief Carmen was here, he was very concerned that there were no real provisions for the traffic and safety plan. So to me, that should be specified. Um, also, traditionally, the Catholic Festival permit and the Easter permit for, uh, Harry Banks Park. Those permits came before the commission, and, uh. It was said that that was because it was a two-day festival or something. Um, I don't see that in our park permit or ordinance section. Um, so my suggestion would be that a park permit should come before the commission. When the hours are gonna be outside of the regular dawn to dusk hours, in other words, when it's going, gonna go into the night. Um, when it's gonna be for more than one day, or maybe over a certain, uh. Number of people, just like the. Just like the need for a permit.
Yeah.
Um, and as well. What was it? So there's a, it says, um, anybody who has a park permit is supposed to display it when asked. That's very awkward.
Correct.
And to me, if you have, if you have an activity and it's a permitted activity. I don't see why we can't give people a place to post their permit, because when somebody's having an activity in the park. They don't really want strangers coming up to them saying, do you have a permit? And that, that's just awkward. Uh, if we could have a place for people to post it, and then even though, yeah.
Oh, we needed it, or something like a bullet to go there.
Exactly, right, 'cause, you know, once there was somebody having a church service over evil lines parked across from our house, it was very loud. I had no idea whether they had a permit or not, you know, you don't really wanna bother people.
Is this distinct from a special event permit? It's a park permit different, it's a special event permit?
I think they're talking about a special event permit.
It's a special, it should be a special event.
Yeah, it says, it says permit requires special use or activity in a park.
If you go to five, five point eight, and of course, this is where the chief of police shall determine whether security or traffic control devices may, may they do to the size and nature of the proposed event. So we, of course, that would come back to the city, um, to the city manager. I think you would want to change that. Right, and that, that would probably take care of too the traffic. And Keith, before you, um. Do we have, I mean, your thoughts on being able to post a permit somewhere on a park? I mean, we're looking to you too for some, your expertise. Your thoughts on that?
We have the issue of permit first, we have to come up with one, that we think would just come in here, fill out speaks.
They just get that approval, a piece of paper.
I mean, I was just. On the kiosk down there up next to the brazier.
Yeah, cause, uh, Johnson Temple, they always had to get a permit for, when we having a free fish fry. We had to come up and get a permit and put our proxy, how many people wanna be in attending? And, and we just put it right there with the, do you want to, that, that, tack it up there? Oh, see, if you don't, somebody could get in there, and she, we'd be done with that permit for.
So there's no question, I understand, right, so there's no question, so then nobody can, can say, well, I'm used to this park, and then like, no, we have a permit.
And as well, for example, if somebody has a permit for twenty people, or whatever, and it turns into a hundred people. Then, for example, if the sheriff's officer comes, he can look at the permit, and it, it'll just all be very clear.
Yeah.
And then the other thing. Cause trust me, you don't wanna go asking people these days. The other thing that I noticed on several page five point eight is that this has come up before, we have pretty hefty fees for sports teams. You know, like the.
That's gonna be on five point six.
Yes, it's on, it's on page five point eight, but it's under fees, five point six, and I just wondered if we wanted to consider, you know, for youth sports, for, this is a special sporting event, but somehow there was an issue, um, when the Pop Warner kids were using the Harry Banks Park. Um, that, the fee had to be waived. And it, because it seemed, you know, very high, because they were very, they could barely buy uniforms. Uh, so this is special sporting events, but it was interpreted to apply to Pop Warner, and they had to, I don't know, the city manager at the time waved to.
Oftentimes, special sporting events are like your tournaments, they would be like softball tournaments.
Yeah, you're gonna bring, uh, 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 other way, if we gonna have something, a, a football, football game on the weekend. Something like that. It's kind of impossible for you to have the people, they're gonna attend something that is sort of, you see a proxy.
Well, down here it says the city manager shall have the authority to reduce the fine or deposit requirement for the city. Fee, right, I'm sorry, and sponsored events or charitable events that will last eight hours or less.
We're having problems right now in here at main parks, that, you know, early on, it's, uh, kids playing all summer long soccer on Sunday. And, um, I went through.
As an adult, right now, they're playing soccer.
The adults now are playing in here, it looks like thirteen tournaments over there, and I don't believe that they're paying.
They're doing what? Tournaments, they have tournaments on Sundays.
Soccer, but, yeah.
Soccer, well.
And there's a lot of people, or a ton of people.
So they become.
I think they, they're doing better, but they, there's been some issues because they're parking over in the apartments. All up in their backyards, and, and they were being very disruptive, they've been spoken to a couple of times.
And, and I think the thing that bothers me about this, you know, the adults are actually, um, they should get a permit. And they can actually park probably, and, and I'm not sure they can now, okay? But I would think that they'd be able to park in the safe, stable hot parking area, and actually have somebody, you know. Truck them in to watch it rather than take up the whole world, you know, come to some agreement where they can park and.
Certainly two, three bucks.
That's what I mean, it's, it's really not that, that far.
Well, and there's parking, they can park on the other one, right there where they practice football too, except they don't want to, they like to sit on the back of their cars, they like to have their coolers there, so you know, it's a.
But that's another problem, drinking beer, too, so, anyway, I just thought I'd bring that up this time. I mean, I mean.
We have spoken to the head of that lane.
Oh, I know, yeah, I, I know, I was involved with that, I especially was involved with kids, but now it just seems to grow into something different. It's something different now, so, anyway.
And they're still, are they still playing softball out there, Keith, on Sundays? They're not playing softball anymore on Sunday, but.
Oh, it did, the diamond, that grew up.
Well, they were playing, they still were playing.
They're out there on the grass.
They were playing out there on the grass, yeah, so, okay.
So my question is this, are any of these people coming to city hall and requesting a permit for anything? No, well, should, I mean, doesn't our ordinance say that they should be? So that we know who's there and what they're doing and how many people.
Cause you also have, you know, you also have some food trucks going on, I mean, it's a wicked deal, but if you want some soccer, it's actually pretty good soccer.
Well, you know, not, not, this had a kind of, used to operate out there to, to play some union evidence. Uh, the, the, the president in charge of the league, soccer league. She would go up there to collect. And get all the necessary paperwork.
Yeah.
Yeah, the president tried to leave, but I don't think we have nobody coming up here to do the paperwork at all.
And they're playing here because you're getting it through.
Right, yeah.
That's what's happening, so.
She goes, just, you know, I went by that a couple of times, and people that did, see, and that's another security problem. Sheriff don't know how, if we not, you, we don't know, if we not get no upfront information about it. We can't, if you're going over to the sheriff's office.
Right.
So they don't know something, something happened out there. There you go.
Well, they weren't having some issues because they were blocking the road, they were parking in the middle of the road, and so I do know the sheriffs believe that they were, they're kind of trolling that. And their captain was aware of it, and they were checking on that.
Well, I just think it's, it's part of the city, I mean, we do after these parks. Um, or, you know, Crescent City primarily, for the, for the people of Crescent City to use. Uh, it's just like any city, uh, they have their parks for the, for the citizens of their cities, and of course, other people can come in and use them. But normally that's done with fees or fines. And, and we don't really require any of that here, and oh, by the way, maybe if we did, we might go get another guy for Keith, Keith's department to maintain the parks for us, I mean, that would be their primary job to make sure the permits were done, uh, you know. I, I know we have a guy that goes and mows the fields and stuff like that, but, but we don't really have a park department per se, so it's.
Yeah.
I'm ready for that.
At this time, yes, ma'am.
If you look further down the page, on page five dash eight, insurance, they're supposed to have insurance for those, uh, events, and if they.
Don't get hurt.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I agree.
So we have more than fifty people out there?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
So why are we?
Based on that soccer, that's football.
But soccer, that'd be, that's busy day.
So my guess is that most of these people are not necessarily from Crescent City.
No, they're from, someone from our land, and they don't.
Yeah, they come from our land, that.
Well, we're, we're, we seem, we seem to have a gap here, because it's great that they come here, but then that's costing us, I notice, when I sign the check. Um, the, we pay for water, I mean, the, are the bathrooms open?
Yeah.
At that line.
And then we got, I think we got a holy party over that corner.
Yeah, for the soccer.
Yeah, over the soccer area.
Right, so basically, we're paying for the pork potty, we're cleaning bathrooms, we're providing.
We're providing water for people that really don't live, you don't live here.
Pay the taxes for it.
Pay the taxes for it. They don't pay any taxes at all.
I'm assuming they're gonna spend some money locally when they're here, but that is a very large number of people for us to allow out there. Not getting a permit.
Keith, before I open it up for public comment, do you have any comments on this? Since you're the one that really, you and your, your staff deal with this.
When the soccer, when the soccer first started.
Yeah, I know. You're gonna not be happy with me tomorrow, then it's okay.
When the soccer first started, um, they did have a permit. And the guy was, the gentleman that was getting the park for every weekend, paid for the portallets that were there. And then, you know, of course, he quit because the field was getting bad. And, uh, he was taking care of the irrigation and all that. This particular group that was here now, majority of them are out of Pearson. They come here because during the COVID, Pearson shut down. So they come here because they knew they could get on their feet. And that's where they all come from. And, uh, I mean, I know y'all talk to them and we just gotta, you know, get ahold of them and say, hey, if you're gonna play, we gotta have insurance. I mean, we're even looking at maybe putting some lights up, but then again, what is the schedule for the lights? Is it gonna be nine o'clock, ten o'clock? I mean, when we played softball years ago, and Miss West can tell you, cause her husband played, it'd be eleven, twelve o'clock when we left.
Yeah, I was about to say nine or ten, right?
It'd be eleven or twelve o'clock.
I don't wanna do anything that we discourage people from having these sporting activities because they are, you know, it's, it's, I mean, kickballs, kickballs. I didn't even know this. They have kickball leagues now. My daughter's on a kickball league, you know, in St. Pete. And I'm like, I didn't know that they had that. So, but again, those games start nine, ten o'clock at night, you know, it just depends on how to get.
If they're gonna play, they're gonna have a bunch of people. They need to add one, one for it. Because for one, they have to walk over to Harry Banks Park, use that, well, actually at night it's closed. Now on Sundays, it's open. But they really should get extra portallets because, I mean, so far they've been doing okay. I guess since ever y'all had to talk with them about it.
We haven't had any complaints since we've spoken to him.
Yeah, I mean, Cecil hasn't complained about the garbage. One bag here and there, that's fine. But when you get ten to fifteen bags, let's get a little carried away. Kinda like Dexter.
And, you know, we have people come out there and, and makes money. They sell.
Oh, yeah, they've got their.
Yeah, they got their rent.
And we're not checking to make sure that they're properly permitted. That is, that is a concern with the concessionaire, that they're properly permitted.
Okay, but the insurance and, you know, and the coastal food permit, sell food out there, the other things. We, we really do have to start looking into those things, you know, just as the city.
And we want people to, we're not trying to block out Crescent City. I think that would happen now, but we do want people to come in. We've got to understand that we got merchants. Uh, the more people come into the city, the more grocery or whatever. Cause they're family, they're mass, why they're here. So we gotta kinda look out for the people too. Don't have a whole lot of business, but the one that we do have, and we want them to be prosperous, you know? Cause they don't dare be folding up and going. So we don't wanna just block them out. I mean, we just need to set the rules and regulations. And I, I think that that'd be, to me, the, the best thing.
It's a, that's a double edged sword. Do you, do you want people to come and spend money here, but you also want people to live here?
Right.
And our neighborhood, thirty years and more past, has been disrupted by unpermitted activities that, if, I, it distresses me to know that the roads are being walked and that the neighbors are being annoyed. Because if you, if you make the residential areas unpleasant, then people are just going to leave. People and, people and.
Well, yeah, but also, but if you live next to a park, you live next, I mean, you live next to a park, and that's what the parks are there for, the enjoyment of other people.
Okay.
As long as people are following the rules and they're not being disruptive.
But that's my point. And you have just indicated that they've had to be talked to, the people aren't getting permits. And what happens is people just decide they don't want right there, they don't wanna buy there, they don't wanna live there. Because it's mayhem. It's fine to have parks, people enjoy that. But you don't, you don't want the residential people to feel like, you know, they can't have quiet enjoyment, then they can't, you know, they can't, they worry about who's there.
Okay, but I, I don't really, I mean, I, we have to be careful because I really don't want people to think that in our parks, we have mayhem going on. Because I really don't know that we do. And, and we did address, we, yeah, we did address that with, with him. And he was very respectful to that. And, and I think that, you know, like I said, we haven't had any more complaints, um, since then, but we need to reach out to him and just make sure that they have the proper permits and they're doing everything the way they should be doing. And, and the insurance, when you tell them that they have to have the insurance, that might take care of it right there, you know, knowing that they have to have that insurance. And the company insurance.
They may already have some.
And they might.
Especially, especially the, the, the men's groups. They might already have some type of insurance in the government, but we wouldn't know that, no. Cause they don't, they don't come for a permit or anything.
So that's just, we just gotta reach out to them. Okay, I'm gonna, this time, I'm gonna open it up for some public comment, cause they've been waiting to speak. I know, faded breath. Okay, at this time, I'm opening it up for public comment.
Faded breath?
Faded breath.
Okay.
Y'all want to, uh, no comments?
Comments on what?
Well, we're still on, we're still, we're not, I know, we're not on yours, we're not on yours yet. I'm getting, we're gonna get to it though. We're gonna get to it. Mr. King, you don't have anything, any comments?
Scott King, seven twenty-one, lemonade. Yeah, be careful. I'll tell you, sitting out there, uh, doesn't sound good. It's, um, a lot of can't, shouldn't, don't. Yeah, the parks are there for us to use, so let's, yeah, let's, let's, let's be careful with that. Um, I'm. If we're going to tout finds on signs, not everything on that sign is worth one hundred fifty dollars.
Well, exactly.
I, I, yeah, I think that's what you, where you were going. So let's, let's be careful with, with that as well. And, um, I think, um, let's not get too worried about boats, okay? That's the reason the beach is there. I've never heard anybody upset about boats beaching on the beach until I came to this meeting. We spoke about a few months ago and then, and then again tonight. So, you know, on, once we get ropes up, it's not an issue. But please put the ropes up skinny enough that there's enough room for people to come and enjoy the park and the beach from the water. Okay? And I sure as hate to find them because, uh, as you mentioned about, um, the fishing, um, we also won't know that we need to not beach there if there's not a sign out there. I'd hate to find somebody for beaching on both there, because again, that's what that beach has always been for. So let's be careful with that. Uh, I don't guess you're really getting into this stuff tonight, but, uh, real quick, uh, five thirty-nine, speed of boats. We need to, we need to work on that. It says, uh, no boat or vessel should be operated at a rate of speed which causes waves or damage to us, or a single. Speed's not what does that. The faster you go, the less damage you're gonna make because you have to wake. So that needs work on. And it's, waterway, in the city, uh, let's see. Nor shall we go operate on the waterways in the city exceed a speed of five miles per hour.
Okay.
That's what it says. So, mine idle's at, at ten. So, uh, so we, we need to work on that. Hey, let me ask now. So, you know, we're automatically thinking of Stella all the time on this. Where's the, where is the city limits to our east? Is it?
It's right down the middle of the lake, if you will.
That is the county line.
County line is right.
Where is the city of Crescent City limit on the west?
Doesn't it go to the county?
I mean, on the east. I don't believe so.
I would, it's probably the lake.
It's probably the lake. So we need to find that out because if we are halfway into the lake, then all this stuff counts there. And now.
Nah.
Uh-huh, exactly. Now you got a problem because people come and go all the time, never touch, touch the land or, or whatnot. So I, we need to kinda, kinda look at that.
It probably is the way.
Yeah, cause we have to, we have a submerged land lease.
Then it's, then it's definitely state, all of that.
Right.
Well, another proving factor would be, is, is half of the island in our ci, uh, part of Crescent City?
No, no.
So that answers that. Then it's probably the, the shoreline. So, so then we probably have to be careful, uh, about what. So now, you know, if, if you're standing in the water, now none of this stuff applies to you. So, uh, I just saw that. That's your problem, I'm not.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention though.
So, probably don't need to go through any more of this. It shows that we really need to look at this. No watercraft without water motor or within water motor, not having properly muffled exhaust shall operate on any water within Crescent, within the city. Again, what is, uh, properly muffled?
I like the inciting of badly deteriorated boats.
Yeah.
Looked bad, we don't, we don't like them.
I like no bells or whistles.
But anyway, yes, we, we know that.
No use of bells.
And, and then, and we also caution, why, why have it here if it's already a law, a state law?
Yeah.
Probably so, uh, the whole thing about your boat wake, um, that, that, that's, that's a maritime law. You can't, you are responsible for your wake, so. So, the other, the only other thing, and I don't know if I'll be able to put this in orders and make any sense, but, you know, right now, um, with our, listen, with our codes, we don't really enforce them unless we get a, a complaint.
Right, right.
Okay. And that kinda needs to happen here. Commissioner Burke was explaining, wow, I bring my dog all the time, and there's nothing wrong with that. I break a code, I, I broke a code in town forever. I had a, I had a basketball pole right at the edge of my property, uh, so that you could shoot from the road. That was an issue, so it was never a problem. So nobody ever said anything. So nothing ever happened. And so it was weaponized by somebody who went around and complained and we all had to pull that. So, you know, it's, I guess what I'm saying, it's one of these things where, you know, ninety-nine times out of a hundred, you go to the park, you break every one of these rules, you haven't hurt a soul, and you had a great time. And then one time, it causes an issue and somebody gets bit or, and somebody gets run over or something like that. So, like I said, I don't know what to do about that, but I, I just, maybe put teeth in this, this is the opposite, this is the wrong thing. Maybe, maybe we just need to make, make them fewer and make them right. And then that way, um, they're enforceable. And, um, I mean, that makes sense. You know, example, you put your boat in and you, and you beach it, and then somebody comes up, gives you a hundred fifty dollar fine. Well, jeez, you know, what?
Well, you, you have to know when you beach your boat, that you're not supposed to. There has to be a sign that says, don't do that, you know?
Don't, in this area, in this area.
Yeah, don't do that.
I mean, we've done that. I mean, my whole life, we grew up on the water out here. And we, you know, we're gonna eat, we, we take the boat to the side, pull it off, everybody gets off, eats, and then gets back on the boat. You know, so, and I know they've been doing that at Stella for years, so.
But, uh, I can just mention with, with, with the soccer park, um, you know, we just, we just need to be careful. Uh, the parks are here for us to use. There ain't a whole lot else to do, if you hadn't noticed. And, um.
And nobody's saying for Crescent City, yes, they are here for us to use, but for people coming in, um, that have no skin in the game, then they have to put some skin in the game, that's all I'm saying.
I was thinking of that when you, when we mentioned it over, I'm sorry. Um, uh, you know, the only thing that I, I think that we could say counter that to that is, we don't have enough people in this town to utilize that park. So why do we have fifteen hundred people? And so, you know, three percent of that, um, using the park, so.
Keith worries all the time, we're gonna give him another park.
I'm sorry.
I said Keith is worried all the time, we're gonna give him another park. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner King, did you have a comment?
Yes, I do. I just want to point out, there is a big difference in having parks for people to use within the rules. We do not, we do not need people coming here from out of town, um, drinking in parks, you know, making, doing things that are a clear violation, um, that block the roads, disturb the neighbors. There's a big difference in that, and just having some local people come for a softball game. So, at some point, you have to have order. And I think that's what Commissioner Burke and I are saying, that there's reasonable use of the park. And then you have to have order, cause when you don't, um, it costs the, it costs the residents a lot of money and causes disruption. So there's reasonable use, and then there's, you know, violation of rules and just too much in a small area. So.
Okay. About Charles, do you want to? Our park signs, we need to.
So, yes.
Are we anywhere, are we anywhere further down the right on our park signs? We've discussed a lot here in the last hour.
So what I, what I'm getting is there, there's some things on this that may not be currently in the ordinance. Just to be noted.
Right.
We can either remove what's on there that's not in the ordinance, or we can bring you an amendment to the ordinance.
Which one? It's actually, it was, uh, so, with, um, each one? Jetski's and the airplane.
Airplane.
And as well, um, I think we have a sign that says, no dogs in the swim area. And that is a very important change, but I did not find that in the ordinance.
It doesn't say, it doesn't say that.
Well, it's, it's posted already. The commission, the commission voted, we didn't amend any ordinance. But, and when I say we, this might have, I think this was before twenty eighteen. Um, I, I don't think I was a commissioner then, but it was voted, um, to not allow dogs in the swim area. I mean, there's just obvious reason. It's tested for E. coli and other things, and just was considered not to be a good idea. So the commission voted on it, but I don't see that whatever was voted on, Judy, do you remember? Commissioner Banks, do you remember? I know it was voted on and the sign went up.
Right.
But.
But it's not here.
Right, but it's not in the ordinance. There's a sign. This is not.
Can bring that back to as part of the proposed amendments to the ordinance.
Yes.
Yeah, cause it's buried on center, center.
Right.
The dog, and you lay down out there on the beach in the dirt.
But. I, yeah.
The dogs go in there.
Personally, we do have the puzzles now. We do have the puzzles.
They're not, they're not unleashes.
I wish they were, I'll tell you what.
Me too.
They're final.
Final, better, I like the final.
They make a mess.
Final, um. The problem though is in doing that, when we just do one change to the ordinance, when you have to go through that process, it's, it's expensive with the paper for advertising, so we might should.
Well, it'll include all the things we've talked about.
So you need, we need to make sure we include everything in that when we do it at one time, yeah. Cause from an expense standpoint. Okay.
Then you, you redoing the sign.
So commissioner, yeah, that's expensive too. Did, um, Keith, did you get, um, I know there was some question about pricing?
That's it, the traffic college.
It's on the traffic, oh, it's on the traffic. Okay, those sign, okay. And I know the county's doing signs now, so we can possibly talk to them as far as getting a price. The county's doing signs.
So I'll, I'll, I'll bring those proposed changes and the proposed signs back to you in December.
Okay, okay. Is everybody good? Is there any other comments from the commission before we move on to our next vacancy in parks?
Well, and Marys, as I understand it, the vacancy in parks, um, if we're going to be, wouldn't that have to go into the same ordinance that we just?
Yes, that's gonna have to go into, yes. But I mean, we have us here to discuss it separately.
Sure.
Okay, so we're gonna move on to that. Charles, do you wanna talk about this with the vacancy ordinance? Dogs is actually for that, it's to, I don't know if we want to discuss dogs, any, the leash law.
Yeah.
But we don't have it on the agenda. It's not an agenda, but it is in here.
So, in fact, we're admitting the park rules, ordinance and all that stuff. I just wanna know exactly what y'all want amended. So when we come back, there's not, I know a lot of stuff has been thrown around.
Yeah, we need to get you.
Yeah, but there's no like, yeah.
But, yeah.
So I don't, I don't, and I don't know what the proper way to do that is, if we do it now, because I know there's been a ton of stuff around from commas added here to there, but.
Well, actually, we can't really vote tonight.
Yeah.
What I was anticipating was that we would take our suggestions and that they would be on the agenda at the November meeting, and that we would have a motion to vote that these things would be part of the new ordinance, if that makes sense.
Bring it back.
Do you have time, do you have time by the November ninth meeting to get this?
Be Tuesday.
Not next Tuesday, the following Tuesday, right?
But the agenda goes out.
Yeah, then Tuesday does go out next year, right?
But it's not necessarily on Charles to do that, I mean, it's, I, I think.
I know that, I'm not asking, that's not what I meant, I'm asking, does he have enough time?
I'll need to get all the proposed changes from you solidly then on to the draft.
Well, yeah, I think we need to give kind of what we discussed tonight to Charles, who can then put it into some condensed form, because a lot of them are going to be saying, you know, you and I think.
Okay, but that's, that's different, what I just said to Bobby Pickens, and he said sounded right was we would have, not talking about time to put into an ordinance. At the November meeting, we can make a list of the items that we want to be included in the ordinance. We can vote by motion that we all agree on those things. And then that is the list that we give to our attorney and our city manager, and they actually come up with it.
In December, we would bring.
The ordinance best. We just give them the items, and they figure out what to do with it, but in November, all we need to do, I think, is put on the agenda that we are going to make our recommendations for what should go into the ordinance, and we can do that by motion, right?
Yes.
Without having to draft ordinance.
I was just concerned about, you know, taking an hour, hour and a half.
That's what I'm asking as far as what you have on the November agenda already.
That's why I thought my expedited, you sent them to me, and I can compose them in the ordinance as underline if the things you want to add are straight through, and then you could look, you see your changes are already in there, and just to expedite that process, we can, we can do it at the meeting, and I think it just might take us.
To me, I think it makes more sense to agree in principle as to what we want. And then let y'all fold them into the ordinance. Because that's a more difficult procedure, whatever you think is, I mean.
And I think, I don't, unless there's some, I don't think there's any rush to this, I mean, I think we can, as long as it's done within the next couple of months, I don't think there's any reason to rush to it, just so we get an ordinance passed, and then we have to amend it in the future. I had seen, it looks like since two thousand and seven, it's gone like this, so I don't know, I just, all I want to know is exactly the changes that need to be made, so I don't bring an ordinance that's missing and stuff, and then we have to go back through it.
You're gonna have, yeah, because you're gonna have to have two readings on this.
Well, it doesn't matter if it's December, it's the first, or January, it's the first, just go ahead and get it right. I agree with you.
Yeah, you must take time and.
That's my concern, is, you know, are we rushing something, I know we need to get it done, and we want to get it done, and the intent here is to have it done, I just don't want us to rush into something without fully.
So I'll add to the November agenda, you all bring your, your changes to the meeting, and we'll we'll go through, and then come back in, in December with a first reading. If there's further changes, we can change it at first reading.
The other thing you can do, if you, if you believe, if you want to, because I know that agenda's getting filled, if we want to, we can also do a special meeting prior to at five o'clock. Will they time certain that we have to have this done?
Well, it's just extending the meeting earlier.
Well, I know, but earlier or later, I just, I don't want us to get us. Okay.
I think.
It'll be fine, so you'll put it on the November ninth.
And the only other concern I have about the whole finding people is, I don't know if it takes care of the problem legally, because what if they simply just don't pay the fine? I mean, I don't, there may be ways that you can go after, I just know that in the United States, there's no debt or prison, so there's not gonna be any enforcement passed. We hand them the ticket, and then.
Why don't we do parking tickets, why don't we do speeding tickets?
Well, speeding tickets, we don't have our license, but we wouldn't have that.
We don't have that.
We wouldn't have that.
We do not have access to the parks.
Yeah, I guess you could do something like that.
Right, well.
Or if it's not paid in a certain amount of time, then you are trespass, I think that would be fine, but there's not. Yeah, I just wanted y'all to know that when we find people and they just don't pay it, unless we do something, that's just gonna apply.
That's why I brought up the trespass issue, because that was originally Commissioner Banks' idea, because it seems to be potentially a more effective mechanism. You can tell people they can't come. We, you know. That's key.
Yeah, exactly.
Right, but that's why I was concerned, what is, don't we have to have a written mechanism that says when, when we trespass, you know, is it repeat offenses, the mayor said a particularly egregious offense? I mean, we, don't we have to have a path to the trespass, is what I'm asking.
No, I guess that's something to talk to Carl about, have that ready for November ninth. He can answer some of that, I think, as well.
Or do you want to stretch it into this end? It is, I can see this being lengthy.
Yeah, it's gonna be lengthy, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, we're, I'm gonna stretch some. I know, it's early, but it's better that we have got to jump up.
I don't think so, wait, take two, three, four months, that's okay, but just get it done.
Section two point five nine of the ordinance, we're, okay, on the slide. Those are all the codes and ordinances maybe enforced by the, by citation to the county court. The county court has a system. Oh, if you write a citation, it's paid to the court, and usually violations pay up to a five hundred dollar fine. So if they repeated, if they violated a class one, and it was a hundred fifty seven dollars, and they did it again, then the court would fine them five hundred dollars. According to our codes, it's written down.
Well, if it's, if it's, if it's court enforced, that's a little different, isn't it?
Not necessarily, they just turn it over to a collections agency, there's still no, there's no way that you can say you have to pay this. You don't pay more fines, it just goes, it just goes into a collection agency.
Okay.
So, may I say something else?
Yes.
Some jurisdictions have where, if it's you violate it once, you know, you go to court, and it's a five hundred dollar fine, you do it again, you lose your driver's license. But you'd have to incorporate that into your ordinance.
Wow. Yeah.
Well, so we've got some things to think about.
Yeah, we do have some, and some, and some research that we need.
Yeah, that's why we don't need to be in a hurry.
So, just December again.
Yeah. Let's move it to the December agenda, and I'm, I'm gonna suggest, if we can, commissioners, you can decide. We've got the traffic calming issue, and I know we've got some residents here that have been waiting on that, so we might want to just skip over and talk about the traffic calming if we can, if y'all are in agreement, and then we'll go back and finish up where we, where we left off.
Sure, well, is there somebody, I mean, do we have another opportunity for public comment, or?
No, I'm gonna give them a public comment opportunity, yeah.
All right, well, thank, also, it would be nice if people in the audience would be considerate about their language, I've just heard profanity.
Okay, thank you.
We're skipping to.
Let's go to our traffic commie.
Did you have a copy of the letter? Karen, did you pass up a letter?
Did you have a copy of, did everybody get a copy of the letter that we got, Mr. Briarley?
No, no. I have many copies.
Yeah, I thought he ordered them the other day, I've got here. Okay. So I'm gonna go ahead and take some public comment, I'm gonna open it up for some of the comment first. So do we have anybody that wants to speak on traffic commies issues?
Traffic comment?
Yes, sir.
My name is Ben Briarley, I live at four one four Pine Street, been there for eighteen years. I'm eighty-six years old. Ever since I've been here, I've complained about the traffic on Pine Street. I really call it the Autobahn of Crescent City, because nobody pays any attention to the stop signs. I've seen some of the city employees run the stop signs. And I've heard once, a person over here talk about, there's no sign on the entrance to Crescent City saying, city limits. That's the other thing I like to have done, is to put a sign out there on, what is it, either Junction or Reunion and Pine Street.
It's all seventeen, so it's seventeen runs into Pine.
Crescent City, city limits.
Right.
But the other thing I have, I see that they put in a couple of speed bumps. I would like to see them put in some speed bumps. Speed bumps just don't get it. They don't slow anybody down, unless you put in a speed bump. Yesterday, I was over in Gainesville, and driving right by the University of Florida. They have some significant speed bumps right on University Avenue. I mean, you've got to be going fifteen miles an hour or less, because they're like seven feet long and significantly hard. So, there's a dozen of them all the way down University Avenue, I don't know, area, you've been over there?
Yeah.
Have you seen the speed bumps?
Yeah.
Slow down, don't you?
They melt, they gonna slow you down.
Well, you know, if you go to any one of the cities around here, like you go down to Muggorah, you go into the residential area, they got speed bumps all over. You go to Gainesville, you go in any of the residential areas, they got speed bumps. They're gonna slow you down, or you're gonna wreck the car. There's something needs to be done, and that way there, the police would at least be able to monitor the speed limit on seventeen, which is, there's extra. Because if I pull out here, and if I'm driving thirty-five miles an hour, I get passed like I'm backing them. And if I pull out from Orange Avenue to go north, I've got to really, really pay attention to what's going on, because some of those people who are sixteen miles an hour are going south. And it's gonna cause an accident, I mean, I every once in a while, in the past, I used to be able to hear an accident over on Reed and Pine Street. I hear a big wolf. And I'd call the sheriff's department, because usually it's on the weekend or night, and I couldn't get anybody from the city police department. So I called the sheriff's department, saying, I don't know, you need to send a police officer to Reed and Pine in Crescent City. And they say, there's no Reed, Pine doesn't cross Reed Street. I said, yes, it does in Crescent City, it does, not in Palatka.
Yeah, they have a Reed Street, Palatka.
Yeah. Yeah, it doesn't cross, but, like I said, it's just, it's a disaster waiting to happen, and I I hate to see something go on long enough so somebody gets killed. Then, everybody's gonna look away and say, how come we didn't do this earlier? When Mayor Sam was here, I worked with Mayor Sam quite a bit to try to get some speed bumps in, but nobody wanted to do anything about it. So, something needs to be done.
Thank you, Mr. Briarley, and he has been very patient, as we'll say, because he has called and spoken, and he's now with us, but he's not the only one that's complained about Pine Street, and coming across Pine and ignoring that stop sign when we speed down Pine Street. So, do we have any other public comment on speed issues?
Mr. Briarley, I can remember the last sixty years, it's been like that.
I know you said you used to run those.
Yeah.
Before we have a four-way stop sign.
Right.
But with that, I'm gonna close.
That was a lot less than two.
I'm gonna close public comment.
I'm sorry.
Oh, you're fine. I'm just gonna close public comment this time, and commissioners, let's open up discussion, Commissioner DeVito, you passed out some papers, has everybody gotten a copy of them? Are these your observations, please explain them?
Yes, and I am, what I have written up speaks in large part to what Mr. Briarley has talked about. They're basically, the page that says two of three is a long list of either accidents, things that people have complained about at the commission meeting, things that I report to the police all the time, and they primarily, not all, but most of them occur, there's a route that people take coming into Crescent City on seventeen and South, and they travel north. They go from Old Seventeen to Pine Street, they turn on Lemon, sometimes they turn on Orange, they turn on to South Main Street, they go north to Central, they make a left, they go on to Grand Rondo, I mean, not Grand Rondo, yes, East Grand Rondo, then they turn on to Vernon, and they go north out three oh eight. And then people from north of town come in on three oh eight, and they either take that same route opposite, going back south past Mr. Briarley, south on Pine Street, or, and we've had complaints from Lawrence Coleman, that's I've done, I they make a left, and they speed up Vernon to the stoplight, but basically, there's a route from north to south that goes on those westerly streets that I talked about, people speed, and they run stop signs. They run stop signs on Pine Street, they run stop signs on Main Street. The main thing that slows them down is speed bumps.
Yeah.
We have three speed bumps in town that were new, that I specifically brought to the commission, and we were hoping, I mean, we originally, I think we're gonna have the little narrow ones, and it got changed to wide ones. There's one on North Main Street, the people who lived near where it was put in spoke very appreciatively of it, there's one on Grand Rondo, and then there's one on South Main Street. The speed bumps do seem to slow people down, Chris Cole on South Main Street, the man who was hit by a car. Right, he asked where the more abrupt ones, that would, you know, people would know, drivers would notice more. So the second page that I have, and I don't know if we want specific proposals, but I brought about it, but I brought it, because we've been talking about this a long time. I described the north-south route that's west of Highway seventeen, and Mr. Briarley, that's absolutely right. People avoid seventeen, and seventeen's got its own problems. But my specific recommendations are, starting at the north, put a flashing light or three-way stop where three oh eight becomes Vernon, and you can turn right on the East Grand Rondo. This would slow people down as they go toward the flashing light on Vernon, and it would make them stop before they turn right on the East Grand Rondo, because what they do is, they just, they just go from three oh eight, and they fly down East Grand Rondo. They don't have to slow down until they hit a speed bump, and then the stop sign at Central. When you're going south, when you make a left on Central Avenue, I think that's an opportunity for a four-way stop at Central Avenue and Main, because what people do when they're coming from the bottom of Central Avenue. From the bottom of Central Avenue, when they've turned off Grand Rondo, they floor it and go toward the stop sign. As well, I think East Grand Rondo could do some speed bumps. Chris Cole asked for more speed bumps on South Main Street. Lemon Avenue is a potential place for speed bumps, and I'm sorry, I left out Pine Street, Mr. Riley has asked for that. So basically, there may be other areas that we need to identify, and I have some questions about that. But this is what Mr. Riley is talking about.
Well, even the mayor said that when I talked to her about, even over on Prospect, Prospect Street, that people are speeding down through there, and that's twenty-five mile an hour speed limit.
And we don't have a stop sign, and they know, it's a straight shot, once they hit South Prospect, all the way down to Central, there's no stop sign.
But I think almost the whole, the whole area around here, all the streets need to have some kind of speed bump or something. So that, back, probably have a tendency to keep people off of Pine Street if we had two or three stop or speed bumps on there. And then the police could concentrate just on Highway seventeen through there.
Yes, absolutely, and there, I have to say, the, it was Barbara Shaw, West, Commissioner West, that wanted the stop signs on Main Street. Right, so there's one at Merle and one at Cypress, and invariably, people come flying down there. Forty-five, fifty, fifty-five miles an hour, and they roll through the stop signs.
They do. Uh, I'm thinking. South side between Reed and Junction Road would be a good area to have one, and then have one closer to the front of your house. Not right in front of your house, but on that second block there, because they would hit, coming from Old Seventeen onto Pine. They would have to slow down, there's a stop sign, they don't slow, because as we're coming out Reed. You know, going south, we see it all the time, very careful there because that, but then they have a stop sign. But then if there's another. Speed bump in the block that you're living in between Orange and Pine. That should slow it down tremendously.
Yeah, well, even Reed Street, you see a lot of people speeding, they'll turn off the seventeen and go right through the stop sign.
It's a raceway down there.
Fifty-sixty miles an hour.
It's a raceway.
Well, also, Grand Rondo is a, is a major concern, because Grant, if you ever stand on, I was standing there yesterday, and they just, they fly down Grand Rondo. And, and what Captain Assery has shared with me about the speed bumps that we put in place is those are. Those are actually not as effective, because those that like to speed. They like the lift that those provide, those speed, those speed bumps provide, so. You know, it's those people that are caught by surprise that, you know, it affects, but then there's those people that enjoy, enjoy that, and they like that lift that it gives, so the speed bumps that we have, yes.
I don't think stop signs, I don't, I don't think speed bumps, I, I, I just really don't, I don't like speed bumps in particular. And I'm not sure, I, I mean, maybe there's, there's a whole lot of reasons. Why we have not started to look at directional change on some of these roads that are so straight. I don't know what the process would be, I don't know why we haven't brought in, I guess it would be for the Department of Transportation. To come and discuss where we might be able to do some directional changes on Reed Street, for example, on.
One-way, one-way streets?
No, directional change would be on Reed and, and right, right as they connect, put, put a circle.
A roundabout.
Yeah, put a roundabout, not even, yeah, I mean, yeah, put a, put a roundabout, if you go around.
Roundabout substantially slowed down people, but even if you go down to the land, and they've done a one on the far side of, south of the land. Where they have a traffic, even that, people all around that.
Well, they, they do, but, but I know how they go down Main Street, and I, and I know how fast they, they. Take off on Grand Rondo, I mean, it's fast, and it doesn't have to be a roundabout. It could be, you know, I always give the, the example of the big tree on Lake. Okay, where it's just sitting in the middle, and it's just a little, it's just a little curve that makes them not go straight, they have to, they have to curve a little bit.
It's a deviate.
Exactly, it doesn't have to be a major kind of thing, i- it, it can be a subtle thing. Grand Rondo, what we need there, and one thing that will help keep these vehicles off doing donuts all the time. Is we really need to put a nice perimeter around that park to make it look, start to look closed in. And wherever you close in, roads where it starts to look closed, it slows traffic down, and, and. And those traffic patterns start to change on that, and, and so that people can't just drive on there and start doing donuts and doing whatever they're doing. And, and, and it makes it look nice, but it, but it does, you know, make things look like you should be going slower there, there's a reason to go slow. You might have to go from corner to corner, putting places where people would cross the street. Okay, put in, put in the little, the little bumps where people would cross the streets and stuff, things that look. Nice that, you know, would slow people down. I happen to like brick streets, sorry, but, but, but I really don't like. Speed bumps and stop signs, I, I think we should try and look something or do something, since we are trying to re-establish our city. Make it, I think.
So I know a lot of cities have gone into view of traffic rotary, and they, and they do help, they do help.
Yeah, and, and, and a lot of them are pretty, and, and a lot of them are in the right places, some of them aren't. Yes. And some of them are in the right places, some of them really kinda aren't, I mean, just Tracy was up in Indiana, and they had one out in the middle of nowhere, she said, there's not even a house around. And they had to spin round about, like, for what, but it must be they got some money.
They're prepared, if you build it, they will come.
I know, but there was like absolutely nobody up there.
I'm going to say, it's a hard thing to figure out without putting these big speed bumps in, because that's gonna be expensive.
It's gonna be expensive.
Well, I just think that we need to look for the future Crescent City, and I don't think the future Crescent City is about to speed bumps and stop signs, that, I just, I'm not picturing it that way.
I, I'm gonna suggest that none of us are traffic experts.
No.
And even though I've suggested those, I hate speed bumps all over towns, I know you do too.
And, you know, but none of us are, none of us are traffic experts, and whatever we do is going to cost a lot of money, and so whatever we do, we need to make sure that we've done it. We've made smart decisions, and.
I have been trying to get a stoplight at the corner of Junction and Seventeen.
Yeah.
Okay, and, and F D O T just said, no, no, no.
D O T has said no.
Okay, I said, okay, well, we can slow the traffic down on Seventeen, and, and we talked to them. And I said, and they said, well, you know, the, the quickest way to do that would be to go into two lanes, well. Charles got an answer the other day, oh, no, no, we can't do that, because I guess, uh, next year, okay, we have a four-lane highway.
I know, it's, it's hard to deal with the four hundred departments.
But that's not what they told us, they said it's gonna take ten years to get the four-way highway down, and then we can push everything back the way it is today. So they're difficult to deal with.
And two months ago, they told us that would be it, that they could, that was a recommendation of theirs, is that we go to two lanes.
Two lanes, until they come back with.
And that, that would calm down the traffic on Seventeen, so.
It's only because it's like that, because they told us right here in this room, you have no choice, and had to be like that, period.
I'm glad you heard it, it's obvious.
And I understand that, and, but what I heard was, yeah, at the time, they, they said that, but they, I guess they didn't think it was gonna take fifty years to get the four-lane highway from Seventeen. And, and so now they've kind of, you know, back stepped a little bit and said, you know, if you really kind of wanna slow it down, we can do that. Once the highway gets here, we already have everything established where they can reopen it back into four lanes. All we gotta do is erase the, the, the paint now, the parking spaces, go away again, and everything is still the way it is. And so I'm not sure where F D O T is today, I know that's where they were about two months ago.
But D O T got their own mind.
Yes, they do.
A, a study, still coming through Crescent City, and they did start going around, to Union Avenue, getting the traffic around. That's too expensive, so they just say, wherever you go, go through Crescent City.
So, Mayor, can I, I recognize to respond to some of what Commissioner Burton has shared, but that's.
Sure, nobody's.
Yeah, this is a workshop.
I like scenic as much as anybody does. But I do not agree with Commissioner Burton that stop signs or speed bumps are going to make us not scenic. I've been in plenty of very wealthy communities that look very nice, and they have very attractive stop signs. We have people in front of us who have been coming before us for two and three years, Mr. Riley has just come here to say that he feels his road is dangerous. All of these roads are dangerous, and I think that we have to respond to the immediate need of public safety. I do not wanna see this discussion devolve into D O T won't do this, D O T won't do that. We need to take control of what we can take control of, we came here to address traffic calming measures. Speed bumps are not that expensive, I inquired of the city manager if he knew prices of stop signs. I know beautiful neighborhoods that have stop signs, and I don't see how we can have people coming here, we've had fatalities, we've had near misses. It, it's really not acceptable, so. If we're having a workshop on traffic calming, I don't want to go home and say, we decided we can't do anything. I'm not positive, but I don't think that we have any capability except within our city, unless we hire someone for traffic engineering. I don't think the Department of Transportation will help us with city streets. Is that correct?
I don't think so, neither.
They won't, but we can, I think that we can talk to the Sheriff's Department, the sheriffs, and they, they, you know, they should be helping us with our traffic anyway. That's what they've been charged with, is to, that's part of it, in as far as their recommendations, because. You know, if we put a speed bump here, and we don't put a speed bump here, you know, how do we know that's the right place to put that speed bump? That's what I'm saying, is, you know, these are expensive, and we need to make sure that when we do it, we do it the right way. And, and it's not saying that they are not needed, I think all of us are in agreement that we need to do something to calm the traffic issues, I mean, we see it every day, we live it, we experience it. We, you know, Mr. Riley, I mean, he, he's a resident, he's experiencing it, we're hearing from him, we're hearing from multiple residents constantly about this. But I just think that when we do it, we need to do that that is the most effective.
Well, I do, I think speed bumps, especially the thinner ones, which are what we originally planned for, because for some reason, Mr. S. DeVito changed it. We were supposed to be getting, and I don't know, prices are very different, we were supposed to be getting semi-permanent speed.
You want, they had money set aside, and they were supposed to be semi-permanent, so they could move those around as needed.
Exactly, and not.
And that's not what happened.
Right, that's not what happened, so a couple of questions I have. What happened to the trailer signs that we got, we used to have trailer signs? And so that would say people's speed, I mean, you were mentioning the sheriff, so my questions are. You know, how much, how much time are officers putting to speeding, to writing tickets, and as well, does, did our trailer sign get surplus? Does the Sheriff's Office have trailer signs, because?
The trailer sign, the Sheriff's Office has, has trailer signs, and our trailer sign was having a lot of issues with it, that's why it's set, kind of. And they have our trailer sign.
I guess, well, the question is whether it's ours or theirs, it's all the same thing now. You know, is that something effective, because Chief Carmen used those, and they seem to help a little bit. But yes, I think we need to get some advice on. Where to put things, and one question I have is, do we, do we need to do a broader survey? And is this something maybe that we could ask people in the strategic planning? Because I certainly think if you look at the list of complaints and issues, that the west side of town on the north-south route is definitely an issue. But I don't wanna neglect other areas.
Well, the east side of town has issues too, with people trying to get to work at the nursing home, and they fly down that road too constantly, which is really like.
I went to Pomona Park a couple days ago, and it went down on their beach. It's not surprising, they didn't put speed bump, but they're not no great big old long bumps we got. They're, they're a little small, about like that, and I guarantee you, you're gonna slow down, you're gonna knock something out underneath you.
Right, they're like the ones of the.
Yeah, yeah, and they, they, yeah, I think it might be can move them.
Yeah, Keith.
Can move them both.
Keith, can you come up for just a minute, please? I know, I just, I just like, I just like seeing your face up here.
Now she's lying.
Keith, if we were, I mean, because knowing the cost involved, if we were to do those that are semi, semi-permanent, and we could move them. And then it surprises people, because it's here a couple of days, it's somewhere else, or a couple of weeks, and then it's somewhere else, and, you know. How much, what is our price difference between those and these permanent ones?
The last permanent ones we did were, the three were fifty-seven hundred dollars.
Total?
And then a thousand twenty-nine dollars for all the signage.
Okay, and that's, and that's not striking them, we haven't striked those.
We strike those ourselves. I got a quote from somebody to do it, and it was way out of line, it's about thirty-five hundred dollars to strike three speed bumps. The ones that are made of ground up old tires and rubber, they're two hundred and forty dollars a piece, they're three inches high, twelve inches wide, six feet long. You put them in with big spikes, now, I don't know if the spikes are gonna back, back out, when they do. I would be cutting tires. And the boy I talked to about doing permanent speed bumps. Said he won't do them, said he'll do the rubber ones. And I said, well, if you're gonna do the rubber ones, we'll do them, because the more you buy, the cheaper they are. We just gotta figure out if we want a bump that's only three inches high, or the hump. That's out there now, it's, some of them are four inches high, we actually made them higher, because we had them on. When we did Clemens, they put them on there and they weren't hot enough. Of course, we didn't catch it at the time, and then we got them on Bay Street, we had them go back and raise them. And you can definitely see that they're jumping when their cars are hitting the asphalt, we got them on Walnut. And Walnut's, I mean, there's a bunch of them, they're ever like three hundred feet, I think, but they're correct hump. But that's up to y'all, what you wanna do is, it's all gonna be expensive, the speed bump probably will be a little cheaper.
You mean the movable one? Okay.
And then, of course, I did talk to Mike Trutzel. He said, what they do is they'll make any sign we want, we just pay for the material. And he was supposed to get back with me today on a rough estimate, but I hadn't heard back from him. And then plus you'll have the price of the post, but we can order the post from Merlin, and then I'll have to order the hardware, which we have some, to put the signs on the post. And one correction, we still got the speed limit sign, but we don't know if it worked, because a bunch of kids knocked it over.
Oh, you have it? Okay, I'm sorry, I thought they, I thought Phil transferred it over to them, because I know.
We don't know if it works, because they knocked it over when it was at Harry Banks Park. And I don't have it programmed to it, and I really don't know who has it, I think Scott and Mike. But we'll just have to ask, you know, find out and see if it works.
Thank you for correcting me, because that was my understanding, is that they took it.
No, they didn't want.
I thought Phil, I thought they didn't want it, because it was perfect, okay, I knew it was.
Me and Charles just talked about surplus today.
And they've got their own, and they'll bring them down, we asked them, yeah, we asked them to, they'll bring them down.
Yeah. But I can get you the information on the bumps, but the speed bumps will be. A year or a while back, we were gonna look into doing ten, and it was like just ninety-five hundred dollars, I think, for ten of them, but that, but that's permanent.
And then when it's there, you know, and, okay, thank you.
Mayor, I'm not really clear, the ninety-five hundred dollar one that's permanent, is that the asphalt one or the narrow one?
Ninety-five, it's asphalt.
Like we have currently.
That's the permanent one, it's just like what we got now.
That's for ten of those.
Right, but those, those are the ones that the sheriff's office says.
Well, it's not high enough, but some of the ones we have are just not high enough. Like the one, the one on Main Street, North Main is not high enough.
That's what I'm talking about. We can get them, they're two-hundred-and-forty dollars apiece.
Well, those, those were great.
Well, how hard are they to move those around? I mean, is it something they can do or is it something that we can do?
For Jack to make the signs too.
We can do it. It's just you gotta pull the nails, they're about that long. And of course, wherever you pull them up, they're gonna need poles in the road. We'll have to patch them because if not, it turns into a hole.
A sleeve and cord, sleeve and plug.
Yeah, I guess both plugs.
They kind of done it like still.
Okay. Well, that's, I mean, that's definitely, it's a less expensive option. And if it's something that can be, you know, moved around, I don't know, commissioners, what are your thoughts? Need some, Commissioner Banks?
I thought you had a word.
Commissioner Burton?
No.
Commissioner West?
I'm not sure.
Yes, I think we have people asking, begging, pleading with us to slow the traffic down.
I think it's just where do you put these to make them the most effective? That's what I'm trying to get at is, where do we put, if we do the speed bumps, where do you put them to make them the most effective?
Well, again, you know, I go back to my directional change. The whole thing about scooting off of Vernon and out to Grand Rio. I mean, it just invites you to go right onto Grand Rio and speed. The way that it, that it's positioned, how you turn into Grand Rondo. Oh, yeah. If you're doing sixty, just turn right away, you know? Yeah.
I have, I, I have not proposed putting any speed bumps on Vernon or Three-O-A. What I said was, we need.
May I finish what I, what I was saying, please?
And, and this is, wait, both of you, this is a discussion. We're, we're here, this is a workshop, this is for us to discuss. And nobody's offending anybody. I mean, I think we're just carrying what our concerns are, so.
In the direction change on that, to be, to make people slow down, you, you, you take half of that road away and make it part of the landscape, but they have to slow down and actually make a right-hand turn rather than just drive into that.
To veer, to yield into.
See, that's what I'm talking about, directional change. Now, I see that our, our, Mr. Rudd, our city manager, his recommendation is to install more four-way stops. Commissioner DeVito has said, you know, on Main Street, stop signs frequently run at South Main, Cypress and also South Main and Merle. She also says the, the stop signs, and I'm not on that side of town, so I, I don't see this. So I'm taking you that you're, residents have complained of stop signs being red, green and orange. Here it says, she's observed cars driving the wrong way up Lemon Street. I mean, to me, that, that really needs, the sheriff needs to get involved with that, you know? Yeah, it does. But I mean, so, so stop signs, I don't think are the solution. You know, so I'm just a directional change kind of role, I think you can do a lot of stuff with that.
So Commissioner Burton wants directional change, Commissioner DeVito?
Okay, what I was trying to say is that no one here has proposed putting speed bumps right now on Vernon or Grand Rondo. They are very wide streets and those are actually ones that would accommodate directional change. However, directional change is very expensive. What I proposed to address the north-south highway issue was to make people stop Vernon and Grand Rondo. Commissioner Burton said, so they don't just roll right onto Grand Rondo. That would be a good place for a stop signal. Even if people are running stop sign, well, hang on just a second, it's a proposal. I don't know that it would work, but the benefit of a stop sign, particularly in a very high visibility place like Central Avenue or Grand Rondo and Vernon is when someone runs it, they can be taken. And that way, there's frequently not a law enforcement officer on Main Street here in Park, but Central Avenue is a very visible place and it is a place where people speed and it's also a pedestrian area. And as far as I know, stop signs aren't that expensive. But somehow we need either a stop sign or something to keep people from just driving continuously at high rate of speed onto East Grand Rondo. And I think directional change is something to look for on the streets that will accommodate it for the future, but you have to recognize that takes more planning, it's much more expensive. And most of the streets where we have these speeding problems, like Grand Rondo, it's very narrow and it's also bikeway. You can't narrow that street anymore. You can, two cars can barely pass and if there's a bicycle, bicycle has to go up on the side of the road. So some streets will just simply not accommodate roundabouts or directional change. We, we don't have the right of way.
Yes. I recommend for the immediate issue, we're talking about Pine and Reed. I actually like the idea of combining stop, there's an existing four-way stop and putting the bumps at stop, two of those. So anyone runs either way, they may regret it, you know, they. They roll through the stop sign and they hit that speed bump. Commissioner Banks is talking about, if you come to a stop, you're just gonna ease over the bump because you've come to the stop. If you're across the intersection from where it is, as you begin to hit speed, you're still going to slow it up to go over the speed bump and then resume your speed. So as an immediate recommendation, we did, to take care of that intersection, let's see how we like the result. I think, I like the idea of directional change, we need to pursue funding for that. It would be a more serious, long-term solution, which would require engineering and so forth. But it is a great solution to, to look for in the future. But to address this immediate pressing concern, I would recommend we augment the four-way stop to make it an impression, you run through that four-way stop sign, it's gonna probably damage your car or at least shake you up.
So we would make that a Reed and Pine four-way? It's not a four-way now?
It's not, it's not a four-way. So it's already decided, put.
So you put a speed bump there?
On, on two of those roads, so no matter what way you're going, you go over it and see what the result is.
We can, and Mr. Briarly, if we were to do that, he could come back and report to us if it has made a difference?
Who need four of those six-foot sections?
Four of those? Okay.
Are we talking the temple route?
The kind of, yeah, we've been pulling out, if it's not working or.
And move them somewhere else? And, and I, I have to say, I do agree with Commissioner DeVito at Central and Main that possibly making that a four-way stop. Because they do, you see that happen, especially if you stand up here and you watch that.
But you know, I have, on Main Street, I have got behind some vehicles and they just go right on through a stop sign. That would bother me, big old stop signs.
But if they do, and there's just somebody there, I'll give them a ticket. Yes, Keith.
Okay, Pine and Reed.
Yes.
And do you want to put them at the stop signs? Or would you rather back up about thirty feet?
About ten feet, probably fifteen feet maybe.
I see they'll have to slow down before they get to the stop sign. They'll already get the hump. You're not gonna make it all, all the way across the road on all sides. Because when they take off from the stop sign, the one on the northbound side, they'll just go around and eat your room and, you know. It's up to y'all what you want to do though.
I like them at the sign to, it's like a punishment for running the stop sign.
Because they'll go over it and run the stop sign.
But that's what I'm saying, if you put them at all four stop signs the whole length, they're gonna have to slow down. I mean, we can put them at the stop signs or, you know, where y'all decide you want. And then, only problem is, next thing we need to figure out is, what are we gonna do when they start stealing them?
They do.
Somebody will come out here, I bet you would have thrown one of them up.
Yeah. I remember distinctly.
Okay, Commissioner DeVito speaking.
I remember distinctly when the issue of the speed bumps came up, Patrick Kennedy said they should be semi-permanent. So that you could remove them, but they weren't meant to just be moved around. I don't have manufacturer's information, I don't know if Patrick ever talked to you about that. But so is there a difference between the two-hundred-and-forty dollar one we're talking about, somebody can glue the bar and something that is a little more permanent, but that just could still take up?
Not sure if they offer that, they offer some that you can glue down. But I'm sure the right person will probably get them up.
Well, let's be optimistic and think that that's not gonna happen. Before we teach them a lesson.
Well, I mean, we can put them up there and then get rid of the sheriff's department, let's put a camera on the intersection.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, is maybe we put a camera on the intersection.
And then, then you'll see who's breaking the law. Yeah, I've heard that several of my guys have run the stop sign, I sat here and watched one of them one day. He on the sentence.
Okay.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure. Would you come up to the podium, please?
So, like Commissioner DeVito said, that, that's been a thoroughfare from Long Station to wherever they want to party for a long time, that, that's what that is. That's the, whoever's got the town, that's why I go right, because I want to be seen. So, and, and then it becomes habit. Okay, then it becomes habit. So perhaps, you know, between Junction and Reed, heading, heading on Pine, there's nothing. There's, there's, there's no building, there's, there's nothing there. Why don't we block the road at, at Junction? So if they're coming from Old Seventeen North, now the road's blocked, they've got to turn right and get on Seventeen. I don't know if that's something we could or shouldn't do all the time, but if we did it for a couple of months, it'd all be out of the habit. They'd be in the habit of turning right. It's just habit, these people have been driving that for twenty years and that's the way you come and go. You don't think about how you leave to go to work each day, you just do it. We could, we could block it right there, it wouldn't hurt any property owner because there's no home or anything there.
Just block the, the line is they're coming off the junction, just the right line.
Right, so, you know, they're coming Old Seventeen, they're, they're stopping at the red light of Junction. Turn right there to get to Seventeen and instead they continue with Winkle's from town, as Commissioner DeVito mentioned. So again, we stopped, but we blocked the road, they would have to turn right or left and, and then they'd be on Seventeen. They're not gonna come back into Main or, or into the Winkle Road through town. They'll stay on Seventeen and go where they're going. And then maybe if we have to move that one day, maybe we're not allowed to leave it blocked, blocked all the time, then they'd be in the habit. I used to be in that habit and I had to force myself to change.
That's a good suggestion, thank you.
But I did want to say, on Junction Road, we have that, the factory building the.
Trucks.
The trucks, a lot of big trucks come out of there now.
I don't know, do they come down Junction though, those, with those big trucks? But they come down Seventeen, but they don't come all the way into Reed Street?
No, no.
Okay, so that's where, that's where you're thinking, is that where you're talking is at Reed Street? I mean, that's what I meant, Pine and Reed?
Well, actually, no, you'd come back a block.
So it would be.
One block back.
If you did it Reed, they'd get stuck.
Yeah, right, okay.
Okay, so are we talking Reed or are we talking Junction or?
We don't want to, we don't want to block that because that's a main artery for them to come out in the mornings. That's their prospect, you know?
Block would be, would be so that you'd have to turn right or left on Junction, you couldn't continue on, onto Pine.
Okay, that's what I'm, that's, okay, that's what I thought.
But we just want to make sure, even with our speed bumps and stuff, you know, we've got these big trucks that'll just, I don't know, they'll mutilate those ones for two-hundred-and-fifty bucks or not, you know, I don't know. I mean, they're heavy trucks.
No, they come straight in, they come, they come down Junction, they hit Seventeen and then they turn left or they turn off.
I just want to make sure that.
Yeah, they come in on Junction, they come in on Junction, yeah.
And to explain.
Commissioner DeVito?
That's right, you have to block those signs. So you need something to manage Junction, I mean, we can do it.
It's a truck, Commissioner DeVito?
Yes, two things. I do not want us to forget what Mr. Briarly also asked for, which is a city limit sign. Where, wherever it is that becomes a city limit sign on Old Seventeen Pine, can we not make that happen? That is.
That should be an easy fix.
Actually, there's, there's two places that we probably don't have a city limit sign, and I never thought about this. Also on, at some point, Junction Road, when you're coming from the west, correct? That's partly in the county and when you get to a certain point, you're in Crescent City, right? So we should probably mark Junction Road and mark Old Seventeen wherever it becomes a city.
Probably West Grand Rondo as well, I think we could.
That's Three-O-A.
No, not on West Grand Rondo. Winds back around and it becomes county.
Right, that's, so that would be a third one, the smaller, the smaller streets.
So I think, I think the direction would be is to make sure that all of our city limit entrances are marked.
Well, I think, I don't know, there might be some really small streets, like Reed Street at some point, but to me.
But our main, our main arteries, the main arteries, the main arteries are marked, okay, so the main arteries.
And then my other thing was gonna be, maybe Scott could get with Keith and he could draw something and they could talk about that because they seem to have some ideas going.
Okay, Mr. Briarly, how do you feel? I know you're tired, you're hungry.
Somebody a long time ago, why not just close off that Pine Street from Reed Street all the way to the Junction?
All the way to Junction?
That would eliminate ninety-nine percent of the problem. But I mentioned that once, a long time ago and they said, oh, you can't do that. That's a thoroughfare, it is not a thoroughfare, that's a street through a residential section. And people are just speeding through there all the time. You can hear them right out here just a few minutes ago.
Is there any chance it's a county hall? Why not just block off that? It's a city street.
It's a city road. And it might, there's some other activity that's going on out there too, so.
I don't understand.
I always figured if I had the money, I'd buy Skip Miller's property out and I would close that road. I would dig it up. Oh, well, we'll get around to it fixing it up and pretty soon everybody will forget about it. And everybody will go down Seventeen to Junction and go on. And you have a residential section that you don't have to worry about kids getting killed on the road.
You want me to bring that to you for approval?
Okay, so we're gonna, at this time, thank you so much for your time, Mr. Briarly, we appreciate it. We appreciate the concern that you've expressed on behalf of all your neighbors too. Let's go back to our, we have either the dog issue or the vagrancy. Dog is not one here, but it is.
It is, actually, that's a mistake on the, the agenda number six should be.
The dogs.
Leash law.
Okay.
Apparently, a leash law has a five-hundred-dollar fine. It was desire to talk about that and the enforcement of it. A couple of occasions, we've had folks identify to us that have violated the leash law. And I, again, going back to the issue of enforcement, I passed that along to the sheriff's office, they gave it back to me and said that's a code enforcement issue to enforce, so that was the reason I thought, because they weren't gonna.
that was the reason I thought, was they weren't gonna do any kind of, that kind of violation, monetary.
So, we need to look into, um, there's, there's not a criminal, it's not a criminal offense, we just have a fine attached to it, you say it's five hundred dollars?
They looked very into the ordinance. Animals, uh, violation penalty, uh.
Four seven, yeah.
Violation of any provision of this article is a civil infraction, and the maximum civil penalty of five hundred dollars. It says that law enforcement is gonna issue that citation. But again, I, I had them, those notifications returned to me, and, uh, had letters, um, given to residents who had observed violating our code enforcement officer, need to do that.
Okay, I think maybe we need to sit down with the Colonel.
Yeah.
And, and, and talk to him and the Captain, and if, and if we can do it like what Pam was saying with the other fines, if you can attach it, or if it can be, they have to go to court for it. Bobby, how is that, how would that work if somebody would have a, a fine, and we filed reports? So, they'd have a hearing and a.
No. I mean, I guess they could apply for hearing, I would assume that it's just gonna be like a traffic ticket, you could just, you would just go pay it. I don't, I'm unfamiliar, working at the state attorney's, I've been in a warehouse that we, that if there ever was a hearing about, like, a leash, I, I just don't.
Well, it would be criminal, that would be a one, okay, it would be a civil, okay. I mean, if there would be something that they can write a ticket. Write a ticket, and we need to look into that.
Yeah, well, I'll set up a meeting with the Colonel, the Captain. Give them the answer.
Commissioners, do we have any comments?
Commissioner DeVito? Sure, I do, um, I think we have a problem with animal control, because I've reported, it's very easy to find a little dog to, with a picture and information about where it is, and it's two weeks later and it's still running around.
So, the one behind the ice cream shop?
Yes, and, um, I know, I mean, the people at Animal Control are very nice, I guess they're just too busy, but, um, when they're nice, I just didn't hear back from them, so I assumed they haven't gotten to it yet. Um, we have talked about this before. And it didn't go anywhere, but if we're talking about our animal control ordinance, um, we already, our ordinance requires rabies vaccination. I don't see why we cannot have a spay-neuter law in Crescent City, we are overrun with cats and dogs. Um, and to me, that's just another tool in the toolbox for animal control. That they can pick dogs, dogs and cats up, and if they're not spayed or neutered, um, there can be a fine, you know, there can be a fine for that. I think it's time, I just think it's time that we do it, we're just, we're absolutely overrun. So, that would be something that we could do, but yes, the enforcement is the key issue here. And it concerns me greatly that we can have dogs running loose, dogs on leashes, and we don't have anybody doing about it. That is very concerning, so.
Well, it's the whole county, I mean, that's, it's a county issue.
Right, I was saying.
I talked to Mr. Suggs the other day, and it's, it's a county issue, it's all over.
Right, but this is our responsibility to advocate for our residents, and then, I certainly am in favor of, um, the city manager talking to Sheriff's Office and seeing if we can, um, get them to address the dogs on leashes and dogs running loose issue, because we don't have code staff to do it, and it needs to be done on the weekends and in the evenings. And that, that's just a bad situation for us.
Okay, Commissioner West, you have any?
I think, uh, Wells, Colonel Wells was here talking, he said they would not be impounding the animals, remember? So, I, that's an issue with us too.
They will help them, they'll assist, but they're not going to be holding. They will call, so what they do, what they, what they do is they call animal control, and animal control comes out supposed to in the evenings and, and pick up the animal.
And cats are a major problem, because you're not gonna catch them.
Yeah. Commissioner Banks?
No, that's been a problem, been nagging over Crescent City for years, the animals. And it really, well, we had a animal control lady, uh, staying out of Junction, drunkard rolled out there, and when they checked into it, she wasn't bringing the dogs out there in, uh, her, to express, I mean, to her lack of, you know, like, she would carry them out there to her residence. She had no dogs and cats out there, you could.
Take them outside, yeah. Well, unfortunately, the shelter, and he said this, they, and they had the shelter, um, session the other day, and they said that the shelter is full, and he said they have five adopted and ten more come in.
Yeah.
And, but they are, they are proceeding forward with building the new shelter, but he said they're gonna still be faced with the same issue that they, that they have, so, Commissioner Burton?
Well, I'm involved taking care of my, my area with feral cats, also with dogs, and, um, we had brought nineteen cats to be spayed. We have brought twenty-five kittens to be adopted, spayed and adopted. And we work with Jacksonville, because Putnam County has nothing, they offer nothing, they have nothing, and in Putnam County, until they get serious, you will always continue to have this problem. Uh, Jacksonville is wonderful. And, um, and we continue, I mean, I now have neighbors now that are extremely involved with keeping an eye on cats coming and going. We know which ones need to be spayed, neutered, but we see new ones drop off, probably, well, it's slowing down a little bit, it's now at least one every two weeks, but, but that's a continuous problem in Florida, where people just, they get tired of them and they drop them off. This little dog that you're talking about, I'm probably gonna be picking him up shortly. He follows everybody.
Right.
And when I pick him up, I will bring him up to Jacksonville to be neutered and, uh, adopted out, you know?
But he belongs to.
He belongs to.
Well, if he, if I don't see a tag on, I'm sorry, he's a stray.
Um.
That's, that's the way it is, I mean, and that's part of the problem too, there's a lot of dogs out there, they're not tagged, they, they don't have any tags, you don't know where they belong, and I'm sorry, I see this little guy running around, everybody, I never see him, anybody, one person. He's, he's just, he's, I think he's just out there with his stuff in hand, you know? That's the way, that's certainly does, and, uh, I, he's a cute little, little guy.
Yes, and I think all of us have done, I mean, we've done that down on our end with the cats, and, and I, I've adopted out to several of my family dogs from the area that have gone to incredible homes, but, but the families all told me no more.
Yeah, I mean, but I try and do what I can, and, and told Putnam County, it's really Putnam County that has to step up, and they really have not done a pretty good job of that.
Pam, have you spoken to the, the residents that have this little dog? It's, you know where the ice cream shop is, they live directly behind the ice cream shop. And so, he's in, okay, he's in that parking lot, he's in the parking lot, he's up and down the road, he's on Prospect.
You know.
He follows just anybody who walks by, so possibly before.
I think he's in that duplex.
It is, in the duplex, so before anybody gets in trouble with, maybe we should at least knock on their door and say, listen, a lot of the residents are complaining, and we're gonna have your dog picked up.
Okay.
He go, he can go to the church regularly.
Oh, yeah, he's, he's cute as well.
He is, he's cute.
But, but I, but I do think he's a little puffer, just going around, you know, eating where he can, doing the same.
Well, let me ask you this, you mentioned cats, y'all still connected with the organization that was in Jacksonville, would come down and get them and noodle and bring them back?
That's the thing, they don't, they no longer come down.
They don't.
But I think, I actually think.
Oh, you think, oh.
It's probably the same position.
Okay.
It's okay, you can provide her with the number.
Well, I'm trying to find the picture, Commissioner West would like to see. Uh, sorry, I've been, then it shows me that, but, yeah, to, if I could speak to Commissioner Burton's point about the county, it concerns me greatly, um, I think that there's no way we can adopt our way out of this situation, because of the math, you know, the, um, the organization from Jacksonville brought us flyers, and it showed the reproductive rated cats, and the reproductive rated dogs isn't that great, but it's still pretty strong. Um, it is very disappointing to me that the county does not want to enact a spay-neuter ordinance. You can totally exempt agriculture, um, but really, I've said this before, it's an imposition on the people who basically act as an adjunct to the animal control, um, and I would like to see Crescent City set an example by enacting a spay-neuter ordinance, and I also would like to see us be advocates for our residents and advocate to the county, I would like us to take a position and ask them to please have a spay-neuter ordinance and start stemming the tide, because this is, my father used to say, it's like bringing a bucket to a forest fire, what we are doing in Putnam County, and it's not creating a quality of life for us or for the poor animals, it's terrible.
Okay, so that was what I was saying about. I, I'm a, I, I will.
You're suggesting making it illegal to have an animal that can breed?
Yeah, I'm, well.
I don't think you can do that.
I, I think, you know, I, but, I mean, my, my thing would be, if you can't even buy an animal or accept an animal that has not been neutered, say, that's, that's my dream further down the line, but, but anyway, um, because it's just terrible the way that, that people, you say, well, you know, you can't have an animal that can't breed, but boy, then all of a sudden, you know, you've got this beautiful cat, and she has five babies, and you're looking at him saying, what the heck am I gonna do with these? Or you have a beautiful dog, and he has, he, he's got like this little Yorkie, and all of a sudden, he's got half-lap retrievers, a, and you're looking at him and saying, well, what the heck am I gonna do with these puppies, you know? That, that's the problem, and that's the, 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 that whole circle that everybody gets into, and people, like I say, we, we watch them drop them off, we watch them, hold the door open and drop the animal off, and, uh, it, it's, it's a hard situation, and I don't know how to cure it, I only know that we're watching our area, we keep tabs on it very closely, we pick up those animals that we can, and we take them and neuter, say, if they have kittens, we get those adopted out, and it is Jacksonville that helps me with that very much, so it is not Putnam County. And, and that's a very, very big disappointment to me, so. And that's, that's all I got to say.
I think it would be god-awful to pass a rule or a law that says that you cannot have an animal that can breed, that, you're in rural Florida, people.
I, I, I know.
That's terrible, that's terrible.
Well, I'm not suggesting. Mr. King, and I know, and, and that's one opinion of one commissioner, and, and I personally don't support that, I think what you run into is when they are, when they are, when they do get pregnant and they're not meant to get pregnant, that a lot of times, that's negligence on, that's negligence on the, on the animal, and it's not necessarily, um, but, you know, I mean, I have.
It's a, it's a, it's just a tough situation.
You know, so, it, it, it is, but I, I, I don't support mandatory, um, spay and neuter of, of animals, and that's, and, and don't look, I mean, that, that's, that's how it came across to me, and maybe that's not what you intended, Commissioner DeVito, um, when you said that all animals should be spayed and neutered, but.
Okay, there are plenty of spay-neuter ordinances in different counties and cities, they all provide for exceptions for agriculture and breeders. But I know Mr. King complains about the number of cats in his neighborhood, and there are people here who are feeding ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five cats, there are no draconian laws that say no animal in the entire county or city can breed, but there are requirements for people to take responsibility, and you have to pay a little bit more money if you want your animal to breed, and hopefully, that means we will take care of them. We are talking about the people that do not take care of them, and Commissioner Burton brought up another very important point that the county could really contribute to, we do not have a low-cost spay-neuter clinic in our county, and that is something that I think the county commissioner really needs to address, and we need to ask for, because people are having to drive, drive and spend their money, and I will just make this observation, this has been discussed over the years about spay-neuter requirements, um, and it really applies to animals that you find running in the streets, that is what you have it for. Um, but most people who object to any kind of spay-neuter requirements, I've noticed, are not the people who are feeding ten, twenty, or thirty cats and spending their own money on it. And I know plenty of people who do that, and some of them are sitting right here.
Well, oftentimes, if you quit, then they will move on to someone else if they decide that they don't want to.
No, what I'm saying is, to people who don't wanna have anything to do with requiring responsible spay-neuter, they're not the ones who are feeding animals. I mean, there are people who live in Crescent City, can keep twenty-five cats and take responsibility for them, and spay them.
Sure, oh, I, I, I'm not, I'm not agreeing, I'm just saying that, you know, you have to, um, it's, you just have to. Sensitive issue.
Yes, it is.
It's a sensitive issue, and, and definitely gonna have some public.
Hey, I gotta turn around, I put lots of cats and dogs in the room right now.
You know, the problem, the problem is too, is that I think, as far as, and Commissioner Burton, you go to Jacksonville and you do this, we go to Flagler Cats over in Flagler, and take all the cats there, and that's fifteen dollars for a feral cat, but, and I know yours is, how much is? It's forty?
Forty, they get all their shots, so they get everything that they need.
Is that, though, what about the dogs?
The dogs, same thing.
They do the dogs as well?
They, well, not, you know, go somewhere else for the dogs, but yeah, she can get everything that she needs, and.
Because that's a problem, that's a problem too for a lot of people, I mean, you know, you can barely get them to get them vaccinated on land, pay the price to go and have them fit.
They stay overnight, then, it's a good deal for those cats, you know?
Yeah, it is.
And they come home, and they, no worries, I'm good.
Okay, so where are we, where are we at this point on, on our dog, on our dog issue?
We're gonna meet with the Sheriff's Office to find out.
Okay, there we go, vagrancy at parks.
This, this last item is, um, Merritt brought back some sample language from Deland to address the issue of, uh, folks sleeping overnight in, uh, in our facility, you know, the gazebo or the hood of Washington, and so, um, I looked it over, I think we could potentially just amend our park ordinance as part of that whole look at it to include language of sleeping on public sidewalks, streets, alleyways, and benches, and then the, uh, the, that is a pretty extensive list. On nine.
It's on nine, and it goes down.
Nine, eight, fourteen.
Sleep at any time.
So, it's, uh.
Sunset sunrise.
Yes, redundant, just some old we already have, you can read that out, uh, to the, don't damage or move the plants, trees, or shrubs from the park, we have, we have similar. So, we called through there and just add the, uh, kill, harm, injure, capture, chase, poison wildlife, so forth, to the ordinance, I don't recommend the down sign.
Put food stuff, um, except that facilities provided, because that's one of the issues they had over here, is I think they had a little.
A little stove.
They have a cooktop, and we have electric there in the gazebo, so.
Mayor, if I, um, I looked at this, I think nine, eight, through D would get it, as far as, um, favorites. I think everything else would pretty much.
I think F, though, is also, needs to be in there, that was an issue as well.
Um, yeah, I think that's kind of, I'm looking at the rest of our, I think that's, I, I think that is a criminal, um, whatever, but, I don't care, F, F's fine, um, but it's not vagrancy, but there is an item there, nine, I, that goes to activities in the parks, being dangerous, and they're saying have golf balls insured, I would add, um, that.
I think it's nine J, is that nine J?
Yeah, sorry, I couldn't even see it, um, I have observed. I have observed in areas of the park that are just basically lawn and that are near the street. Where people are doing like hitting balls with baseball bats, you know, flying through the air. Like across the sidewalks and whatever. That that really should be done on a sports field. And I've never seen anybody golf in the park or do archery, but. Those would be.
Yeah.
I just wanted to get, I kind of went through all the whole park thing and I just was wondering if any kind of exception could be made. Especially for the cats. And. Is that you? The, and believe me, I don't run any alcoholic beverages all the time in the park. I think that's a good rule. However, when we have a special event. For example, if we had food trucks and we had something kind of going on. Is there any way that we're gonna make that part of our permit to include wine and beer in any moment?
Part of the request would be for the city to suspend its open container law and and if you were to have something like no cooking in the park to suspend those portions of the parks ordinance that. Prohibit cooking and so forth. So as part of a granting of a special event permit. That's part of the request is to waive those items that are in conflict.
I'm wondering because of what she said, because I noted that in here too. Do we need to make that specific? In here that unless otherwise, you know, it's been granted through a special permit because right now it's just completely, it's not, it's not accepted.
Well, sort of like the open container law does typically reference events, but when you you have a special event. Permit process. Request is to waive the container. Laws in the city. And then so we can likewise, we can add language wherever we want in this ordinance, you want to say, except that when otherwise permitted by the city commission. So we can do it either way, but my experience of when you ask for a special event, you ask to waive, also, you may want to waive the noise ordinance until ten P M, you know. You waive whatever kind of conflicts with their request is part of the request.
Okay, I just wanna make sure. I mean, because there are some people that no matter what's going, they don't want to see any alcohol involved and. In some cases, because people have been seeing maybe some, some people. They hold too much, they get out of control too, so.
Well, I think if we limit it to only beer and wine too.
Yeah.
You know, but that's. Okay, do we have any more? Commissioner DeVito, do you have any more on this with the vagrancy?
No, I don't, but I do have a comment about allowing alcohol in parks for special events.
Okay.
Until such time as we have. Procedure for safety plans and traffic plans. We've had some real problems in the past with our events. With behavior getting out of hand and traffic getting out of hand and. I think that we really need to be cautious about allowing any alcohol events in our parks whatsoever. We could buy ourselves a huge amount of trouble.
Mr. West, you're gonna talk to, or you had talked about putting together a committee. A special events committee within staff, which included both the sheriff's department, Keith and others?
Yes, when, I reckon this is future, when we get an application for a special event, we review it with a staff review committee. They would look at all those aspects of the event, works, what's in the. So for what would be, what the request we require to bring to the commission, what needs to be waived. And so we would look at that. And actually, in the, if you look in the park section, there was a, there is a section titled that. It says the police chief shall do the safety part, but we would just change that to the sheriff's. The cabinet has indicated they don't allow that, so. They'd be at the table and they would. Request like, what are you planning to do this? What are you planning to do this? We're gonna require this, this and this. And then we'd bring that to you in the in the request for approval of the event. Here's a recommendation of staff events. And the applicant has agreed to these stipulations.
Because right now, though, all of these, for the most part, unless it's heightened. You have the authority to approve these.
Yeah, it looks that way. Yeah, they, we don't have a. Real strong section in the code about special events, so. My experience has been when it exceeds a certain expected attendance, it automatically goes to the city commission. If it's an event that I think maybe somewhat controversial, I'm gonna bring it to you regardless of what the attendance is gonna be.
So I think tonight we've uncovered quite a few things that we still need to work on, but I think we are definitely moving ahead. We know our parks that we need to work on. Just looking at that, we need to look at what we're doing with our animals here in town. And how we can better control some of this and also with our speeding. So we have some work ahead of us.
Well, this this sounds like we're gonna bring back to you in December, on the agenda will be a discussion of your points. I don't know if we should take a swing at drafting a. A preliminary draft of the parks ordinance so we can incorporate. This vagrancy language and the changes we talked about earlier. And then you can bring up your concerns or additions and additions and take them as motions to agree to them or throw them down. And then we'll bring back for first reading in January, the actual ordinance.
And maybe in January we could have that and then we could schedule. We'd have two meetings possibly in January.
And we may need to bring a special event ordinance in December to prepare. We. If we get the main street organization up and go, I'm gonna wanna jump on, start some new events and we need approval process for that.
How you feel? Yes, Karen?
Um, just being in the industry of serving. For a very long time, I've been doing it since I was sixteen. They have a class that's called tip certification. And it's to ensure proper service and in that class, it actually states on how much each person, like. If she was to go out and drink and have to eat, you know what I mean? So whoever does the serving, you could actually require them to have that certificate.
The state that already required that, pull up a temporary alcohol permit, you'd have somebody who's tip certified involved in the event.
Okay, that's good to know. That's good to know. I didn't know that. You know that? Okay, well, we learned, we've learned a lot tonight. We've learned a lot tonight. So do we have any other comments? Commissioner DeVito, do you have any other comments?
Yes, I just wanna make sure. I was looking at Bennett's and Brower's letter. It's addressed to the mayor and the commissioners. And I did not get a copy. I have not received any correspondence from anybody. For the past like six to eight months, so I'm wondering if something is addressed to the commissioners. Is it not being distributed? Is that supposed to be?
I'm sorry, I missed the first part of that.
So the letter from the Brower's that's addressed to all the commissioners. I haven't received any correspondence from anybody for six months or more. And I'm concerned that things that are addressed to the commission are not being distributed to all the commissioners.
You haven't gotten any, any of the letters or anything that has ever come in in eight months, six to eight months? I mean, we've discussed them.
We used to get letters in our packet. I mean, we used to get letters in our folder, thank you, whatever. I don't remember getting any.
We're not getting any thank yous. I haven't seen anything. I haven't seen, I haven't seen any thank yous. I've gotten some handwritten ones that were just me.
The first letter I've received to the commission.
Yeah.
Well, I just haven't received anything for a really long time, so. Want to emphasize, but says commissioners, that's supposed to be distributed.
Okay. Point taken. Is there anything else you have, Commissioner DeVito?
No.
Okay, Commissioner West?
I'm good.
You're good? Commissioner Banks?
I'm good.
You're good, Commissioner Burton?
I'm good.
Okay. Mr. West? You're good? Mr. Pickens?
I'm good.
You're good? I'm going to adjourn. Yes, Commissioner DeVito?
I think we should thank Mr. Harris for being here so long.
No.
This is my last night, so that's all I've got.
Thank you, Keith, very much. And we appreciate the input that you provided. It was very valuable to all of us. So just wanted you to know that we appreciate you being here. So thank you for bringing that to our attention, Commissioner DeVito. With that, I'm going to adjourn the meeting. Eight fifty-two.